All right, 502, we're gonna call this code meeting to order. Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Yes, um, this legislation, we kept it in committee. This legislation, as far as I'm concerned, we are not going forward with this, okay? There, it's, and I just want the public to know that anybody that's there, this meeting is not about not feeding cats, okay? It's about trying to find a solution to make every, every, uh, citizen and taxpayer happy. Um, there's just certain situations where there's masked cats and are doing terrible damage and no taxpayer should have to ha- live like that. So what the purpose of this meeting is to try to come up with a plan. And obviously, after doing research, after this was written, I realize, and I think everybody in this meeting realizes, the answer is not feeding cats. So just going forward, we, if we need to throw this legislation out and start something new, we can do that, but we just need to come up with an answer. And, uh, that's why I'm glad everybody who joined in is here to help me. I have the, um, the animal control person on the line I've talked to. Um, and I just hope we can come up with a solution to make everybody somewhat happy. Thank you.
Just, can I, can I get the floor momentarily?
Absolutely.
Um, just, just to follow up on Councilman Beatrice's, uh, statement. Uh, the reason I am here is in regards to the legislation that's before us. We did have some concerns, and I'm just saying this for the record, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse. But the definition of feral cats is if you're going to cite these as essentially criminal violations, we have to prove it beyond a reasonable doubt. We cannot prove what a reasonable, what it, what is a feral cat beyond a reasonable doubt. That is a total game show stopper from, for us even considering prosecuting actions under this. Secondly, the use of word verbiage feeding. We can't prove that it's actually feeding that cat. For example, it could be feeding a raccoon, it could be feeding a squirrel, it could be feeding a bird. That's reasonable doubt. Lastly, the third section, I, I think illegally, um, the government cannot put a vested property interest on someone. The government cannot make you own property. That, that is your right as a citizen to decide whether or not you want to do that. The third section of the clause does that. Um, so that's illegal constitutional on its face. So with that in mind, and our office's limited resources giving the budget cuts, I'm gonna instruct any of my assistants, if we were to pass this legislation, we would not be enforcing it in court because it's unenforceable. It'd be a waste of both the court's resources and our government's resources. That being said, um, I understand there is a need to abate cats uh, in the city when it does become a nuisance problem. But crim- these are essentially quasi-criminal actions through Utica City Court. That is not the method you wanna look to. You wanna look to impounding uh, and going that route. That's the route you wanna go, not, not criminal codes enforcement.
Thank you, um, thank you. I, I, I'd see, councilperson friend, I do see your hand. I would ask, I, I do wanna read the current legislation. And then I, I'll open up to the entirety of the council, but I just wanna, you know, have everybody, um, if that's okay with you, or if your point is in response to the, uh, to the council.
It, it's in particular in response to the council, but with regards to potential new legislation that we would bring. But if, if Councilman Beatrice has already said that he plans on rescinding this legislation, do we really need to read it?
I, I agree, Celeste.
Um, I was gonna read it only for, o- only to have a basis as to what was, were the possible solutions. But I'm okay with not reading it because I hope for this meeting to look at the new legislation. But I do wanna see, um, I did wanted to just highlight some of the things because, and, and some of the ideas that I've had, um, not all of this was bad. And, and the old legislation brings up, in my mind, um, things that we should not include in new legislation, given what the council has saying. So if we're going along that way to help our verbiage in the future, not to duplicate it. So, so that's the only reason why I was gonna read it. Um, not, 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 and, and not in its entirety. So I think, I just wanna highlight what the old legislation is saying.
Okay.
And that is that, you know, the city shall be enforced, that this ordinance would be enforced by the animal control officer of the city of Utica. With the assistance where applicable of the city of Utica Police Department, it is, it is, um, if it has been determined that a person, company, corporation is feeding feral cats to the detriment of residents of the city of Utica, they shall be issued an appearance ticket to appear in Utica City Court and defend themselves upon the charge that he or she or they have violated said ordinance herein. I think that's the part that is challenging in terms of the court. And then C is, if one is found guilty of violation of said ordinance, they shall pay fines. Twenty-five dollars, um, if the first offense, fifty dollars, um, the second offense, and a hundred dollars, and the third offense. I think, I think the, uh, tiered, um, um, uh, fining system is, is okay. But overall, the issue from what I'm seeing from talking to councilmen, Beatrice and others, it's not the feeding of the cats. And I think, uh, uh, it's good that Marcus is on, is on the line, 'cause something I've, I've, I've suggested to him. The real issue that, that we're seeing is these nuisance, um, type issues in the community. And how as a council, you know, no one cares about feeding the feral cats. It's just about when it becomes a nuisance for their property or for their home. And I think that's, I think that angle is where this legislation should be, should be pointed at. Um, councilperson friend, I'll see you on here.
Thank you, Councilman Moody. So I, I have a, a couple of things I wanna say, and this is something that Councilman Beatrice and I've talked about. And I talked about it briefly with Councilman Moody, and he wasn't sure that he agreed with me on this. This is a long, this is a big problem that one single piece of legislation can't fix. We're not gonna be able to pass a piece of legislation, get it enforced, and solve this problem. This is gonna be a longer, um, uh, we're gonna need long-term solutions. And we're also gonna need the buy-in of lots of different components of the community, um, including law enforcement and codes and, um, people from the Central New York SPCA, et cetera, et cetera. I, I would like to at least explore the possibility that what we really need here is a task force. And, um, uh, I think that Councilman Beatrice and I would be willing to co-chair that. Um, I also have a lot of this problem in South Utica. And, uh, a task force could, uh, could come together periodically to not just sort of figure out what's the one piece of legislation that we need, but also how do we go about enforcing it, uh, given that that enforcement is gonna have to take, um, different kinds of law enforcement agencies, et cetera. So that's one thing I wanna put out there. And then Mr. Orin, are you still on the line?
Yes.
Can I put you very much on the spot? And I, I do recognize that I'm putting you on the spot, uh, that you don't have a piece of legislation in front of you that, but if we have a situation where we passed, um, a law that said cats have to be licensed, we limited number of licenses to any one household, right? So a household could have, say, eight licenses per household. And that any cats not licensed can be, will be considered by the city to be abandoned and therefore subject to humane trapping, um, and, you know, being taken under the care of, for example, the SPCA where they would be given medical care and they would be found homes, et cetera. Is that, and again, I'm putting you on the spot. I don't have a piece of legislation before you.
There, there's a couple of issues with that. One is you're gonna have to grandfather in everyone that has an excessive eight cats. An example of that is our chickens ordinance. When we passed that banning chickens in the city, we had to give out permits to everyone that already had chickens in the city. But I understand your ends, and I think, again, we need to come back. And I don't wanna tell you how to draft your legislation, you need to look at it empowerment. And I don't think you necessarily have to go so far as licensing cats, 'cause that's gonna create a major, um, workload for your city clerk. But what you could do is that if, if you have a nuisance and the animal control officer believes it's a nuisance, empower them to go out and just impound the cats. Um, uh, you know, assuming that they're wild, and then they could, you could do spay and neuter. Now, I know there's been some dissension, I will say, in the Ag and Markets Law, whether or not that's legal or not. Um, I've reviewed it, a couple other attorneys in our office have reviewed it. We believe that it is, I've actually spoken with another county attorney up north, um, you know, w- we, yes, is there some risk there? Yes, but I, I feel the, the risk is worth the reward. And that, that's the best way to deal with this, is straight up.
Right, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Here's, here's what, I, I get that, the impoundment part. Here's why, I guess, what I was thinking about why the licensing is necessary as a first step is that you've got people who let their cats out of doors. Um, i- is it really appropriate to simply impound those cats?
Pound that.
When those people, that's my actual cat. So if we let those people first license their cats, then if a cat is licensed, we understand it not to be abandoned and not to be subject to impoundment. That's progress happening with that licensing. And most people, or a lot of people wouldn't, wouldn't actually license their cats because they've never let them out of doors. They wouldn't worry about their cats getting impounded.
Again, I, I think this is going to a couple of things. One, I would, again, to avoid the licensing, we could get them chip checkers. They could check for tattoos, they could check for collars. Um, and I, I, if I'm understanding Councilman Beatrice correctly, and we have had this problem where you have a specific target, like a colony of cats, that's the issue. So it's, it's not like we're just gonna go out and set a couple of traps and get what we get. Um, usually when you have those colonies of cats, you're not gonna have the, the kinda overlap of domesticated cats getting caught. Um, but it's a concern, and if somebody, and again, who gets the complaints when somebody's cat goes missing? It's the animal control officer. So if they say, I just caught a yellow cat, and somebody says, my yellow cat's missing, i- it's gonna get returned. Again, it's your discretion. A licensing scheme, it's not illegal. Uh, but that's, that's gonna be a major workload for the, the city clerk.
I see, I see the judge's time, time.
Delvin, are you the chairman? Delvin, are you the chairman?
I am. I, I got, I got disconnected briefly.
Are you the chairman, Delvin, of this committee?
Yes.
Well, first of all, there's no legislation, as I understand, before you go, with the, Councilman Beatrice withdrew that. Also, we've never licensed cats. I don't, I've never heard of that, ever.
Yeah.
And, yeah, just a second, let me speak.
Go ahead, Judge.
And, uh, and also, when you use the word impounding, which is a probably a correct word, but, and, it doesn't agree with how I think it should be handled, but when you say impound, you are presuming there's a place to take these so-called unlicensed cats. And I, I know, don't know of any place where that's gonna be acceptable. I know that the Stephen Swan, for instance, they have so many cats, they don't know what to do with it because they don't really, uh, destroy them. So they keep them sometime for years. So this, I think that I've always felt, always felt that there's only one way that you can deal with the feral cats. And, uh, have the corporation counsel there. And that is, it has to be done by an outside agency. It can't be done by an animal control officer. I mean, there, there are thousands of cats out there, for one thing. There's no place to put them if you, if you found them unlicensed. And licensing cats is, uh, it's a burden, burdens, burden some task because, uh, that makes every, every cat that you owned that you didn't go get a license an improperly, uh, held cat. And that will cause a real uproar, I think. So I don't think that that's the way to, but I, I do believe that all this information I ever read is that taking these cats, uh, neutralizing them and spaying them and whatever they do, and then releasing them to farms, uh, through a, uh, system that did exist at one time is the only way. The animal control officer, uh, I don't think there's more than one, is there? And, uh,
There's just one of me right now.
I just think there are thousands of cats out there.
There's just one of me right now.
The, in, in, in terms.
Yeah, but there are thousands of cats out there.
Judge, may, may I say something?
Hold, hold on, I, I.
Sure, you're, you're a chairman.
No, 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 hold, hold on one second. I do want to do it in this way because we're talking about legislative proposals at the moment, and I know councilperson friends, uh.
Well, the one I, the one I seen is the one.
Yes.
I, I seen is the one that's on before me. Isn't that withdrawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Beatrice, so we don't have any legislative.
Right, Judge. The reason I put it there, the reason I put it there was because I wanted to count, I wanted the corporation counsel to respond to some of those proposals so we did not duplicate them in a new legislation.
I think he's told you he's not in favor of licensing.
Oh, wait, can I, can I say something, please?
I don't know if, I don't know of any impounding service that's available to, to the city of Utica.
I do.
And so therefore, uh, maybe, uh, I, I, I think that Councilman Friend, maybe the only one that's a little bit, uh, under, and this is, you've gotta get somebody, some group that tells you exactly that an action can and be taken. And that one that is sanctioned by the city of Utica.
Right.
And, but I don't think the ci- city of Utica itself has the wherewithal, the money, the personnel, or the place to place cats or, or clerk of ringering thousands of cats and then picking up cats who belong to people.
Judge.
But aren't licensed.
Judge, can I say something here, please?
That's all I have to say about it.
Okay, can I say something here, please?
Councilman Beatrice, I wanna give you the floor and, uh, briefly, 'cause I do wanna go into some of the legislative stuff, so you.
Okay, so this is, this is the problem. And we have the animal control, uh, officer on the line, and I've talked to him also. Judge, I agree with you, okay? When you keep talking about thousands of cats, that is not the problem. The problem is, there is maybe in North Utica, eight or ten locations, okay? Where there is over fifteen to twenty cats, and these people are feeding these cats, and they're damaging their neighbor's property. So there's where the issue is. As far as thousands of cats, we're not trying to stop the little lady from putting food out for one or two cats. I'm trying to stop a pe- people who live on certain areas that have beautiful houses and can't go in their backyard because the person next to them has twenty or thirty cats trouncing through the backyard every night. So that's where we need to go. We need to do something where something we can enforce, when there is an issue, we can enforce that we could do something. That's all I'm trying to do. Not trying to stop people from taking care of their animals, okay? That's it.
I agree with you, but I don't think you can criminalize it or license it.
Judge, well, judging, I, I, I do, I do wanna move to.
So far, I haven't heard any solution that, that involves a good piece of legislation. That's, that's all I'm saying. And I don't, when I've lit this council, I don't hear, hear anything different from him, uh, in that regard. So I, I think the only problem, we could talk about it forever, is that there is a problem. It has to be dealt with, uh, to the satisfaction of the councilmen who are affected by the calls of their constituents that I think are legitimate. It's just that, we just haven't stumbled onto a solution that, that.
In, in, in that way.
I always felt that criminalizing anything usually doesn't work. But anyway, that's all I have to, that's all I have to say about that.
Judge, I wanna move it to that way in terms of, uh, doing a legislative proposal. Here is where, here is what I've heard in, in talking with the majority of you and talking with Councilman Beatrice, that, um, that there should be a permit, not of the cats. I don't think that's the angle. I think the angle should be giving a person a permit to have a certain amount of cats. Now, I think that the city limit should be, no matter how many there is, I think me and Councilman Beatrice talked about, no more than five cats in any particular place at any given time. That a person cannot have five or more feral cats, um, feeding them. That, that's something to consider. The other thing that was to consider was not fining a person based upon.
Yeah, can't prove it. Can't prove that. He, he, he gotta get off the definition.
Hold on, wait, hold on, before, before you respond to all of it, I wanna list them and then you can, you can respond after I've listed them of, of what the, what folks have thrown around in terms of ideas.
Actually, Delvin, just, no, no, hold on, wait. Give me one second here, it's, it's Mike Bellamy. Um, just point of order to everyone on the call. Uh, can we please, uh, respect that Delvin is the chair here, and we definitely need him to drive this agenda? Um, we're all talking over each other, and it's actually getting a little difficult tech, with the technical part of this to run the meeting as well. So please, uh, just heed the, uh, heed the chair, please. Thanks, Delvin.
I want to list all of the ideas and proposals that I've had and that other folks have mentioned, and then give the corporation counsel and the judge to respond to that, or even the council members to respond to that.
Has joined the meeting.
The first thing is, there has been proposals to, in an ordinance, to limit the number of cats that a person can feed. The second thing has been to fine the, the, uh, person feeding the cats, not based upon the feeding aspect, but based upon the nuisance aspect of it. If the feeding has become a nuisance to the neighbors, then they fine first appearance, uh, first offense, twenty-five dollars, second offense, fifty dollars, third offense, a hundred, based upon the nuisance and complaint of, aspect of it. Um, that the cat should be spayed and neutered has been an idea. And then the other thing was that, um, um, if a person is feeding one cat, they do not have to get a permit. As a person begins to feed two or more cats, then a permit is required. Now, I think in terms of the corporation counsel, then the question is, with these ideas.
A participant has left the meeting.
Okay, I think then the response is, um, is that enforceable? How, if it can be enforceable, but these are the ideas that we have had in terms of how we can curtail the feral cat issue. So just to get li- limiting, limiting the number of cats that can be fed by any given person, to maybe to at most ten. Um, uh, fining based upon the nuisance response, spayed and neutered, and then, um, permits only if the person has had, if the person is feeding two or more cats. I think, uh, I think the corporation counsel's gonna say, there's no way you can prove that in the court of law.
Right, exactly what the judge said, um, you, you can't make this criminal. Uh, whether it's through permitting or ordinance, whatever, however you go that way, it's just not gonna be provable. Um, the issue, and what the judge was saying is that I think empowerment, civil empowerment is your best pet, but that comes with a cost. What do you do with the cat after you impound it? You have a contract with Stephen Swan for the dogs. Um, as far as what you're gonna do with the cat after you impound it, that's up to you folks to decide as a matter of policy.
Where has impounding come from, though? I, I, it, it, I, I don't, I don't think in this presentation it's about impounding. I think in this presentation it's about, don't be a nuisance to your neighbor.
Well, right, but may I?
Go, go ahead.
Delvin, may I?
Yeah, yes.
Delvin's running this meeting. Um, so first of all, part of the, my motivation for the licensing is that that will generate some fees that we can then use to, um, to pay for the impoundment. Uh, we do, we already license dogs. People have been licensing dogs for decades in this country. I don't know why licensing cats, um, is necessarily such an obstacle. And there is an agency, I've spoken with them, um, I, I think that, uh, Councilman Beatrice has also spoken with them, the Central New York SPCA, they know how to trap them. They say feral cats aren't that hard to trap. Um, and they would take them to their location, which I believe is in Syracuse. Uh, they would provide them with necessary medical care. They would, um, uh, they would, uh, spay and neuter them, and they would find farmers who are happy to adopt them. What a civil authority cannot do, right, a non, uh, a governmental authority cannot do, and this, the officer from the CNYSPCA was very clear about that. We cannot trap, uh, neuter and release, because to release an animal is to abandon it. So all that they can do is they can trap, they can neuter, and then they can put them out for adoption, and they do a formal adoption procedure through farmers. And according to the officer I spoke with, uh, there is no lack of farmers who are happy to adopt these cats, these feral cats. They use them for pest control on their farms. Um, but my idea of the licensing has to do, that it would, it would do a couple of things. One, it would, it would ensure that people whose, whose pets are outside, um, are not liable to being impounded. Um, and two, it would generate some fees that we could use to pay for the impoundment, et cetera. Um, and that we could also place a limit on how many cats you can have in your household. Um, I do take, uh, Mr. Orin's point about sort of having to grandfather clause in, um, uh, the question of, you know, sort of for all the people who already have X number of cats. That's part of the reason I think that this is a long, we need a long-term solution. It's part of the reason I think we need an ongoing group, something like a task force who gets together three times a year to deal with this issue. Because there's no way of fixing this issue with one or even two pieces of legislation.
So, so, Councilperson Celeste, uh, uh, well, Councilperson Friend, in terms of a task force, I still don't see the legislative outcome. I mean, we, we can, we can have a task force, but if there is not anything to be enforced, you know?
No, the licensing could be part, could be one thing. That would be a legislative outcome. And the second legislative outcome could be authorizing, for example, the Central New York SPCA to engage in impoundments, um, and to take possession of these cats. Uh, so those are at least two legislative outcomes that you could have.
Corporate counsel, i- 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 in terms of the, the fining aspect, is there any, is there any way if we fine based upon nuisance complaints, not based upon, uh, 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 well, you're feeding five cats, or you're feeding ten cats, and you're only allowed to feed two or three cats?
So, again, these are criminal, the aspect is criminal. So in order, your, what you're defining as a nuisance, you need essentially two things for a criminal charge. You need an access rare and a mens rare. And neighbor simply complaining that neighbor has too many cats gets you neither one of those. It's, it's not a criminal, for example, say, I don't like my neighbor. I bring in a call saying, they have too many cats, it's a nuisance.
I bring in a call saying, they have too many cats, it's a nuisance. That's not a criminal case. It, it, it's so far from a criminal case, it, it's, it's a complete waste of time.
How about the damage of property? How about, how about when, when neighbor, when people have to, uh, they can't even have landscaping because these cats are coming in, doing their business all over there? How about when they're, the, the smell that they create when they can't go in their backyard? I mean, I, I'm not making this stuff up. Like I said, there's not a lot of locations, but the locations I've seen it, nobody should have to live with that.
Okay, again, it's not criminal. There could be civil remedies. For example, the situation you just described, the landowner that's aggrieved by these cats arguably could hire a private attorney and sue out a private nuisance against that neighbor. Okay? So there, there are remedies there, but I'm telling you guys, this is not criminal. We're not gonna go around and enforce a licensing, a criminal licensing scheme for cats. I'm not gonna have my assistants do that. And we do get prosecutorial discretion, absolute prosecutorial discretion over what we want to enforce and what we don't. I'm telling you, we're not gonna enforce that. We don't have the resources.
Mr. Warren, can I just ask-
I strongly encourage the impound, if you've got, if you've got something to do with the cats after you impound them.
Can I ask just one question, Mr. Warren? What's the different, wh- what's the situation in the city in terms of dogs licensing? Do we prosecute people who don't license their dogs? What do we do?
It's authorized by New York State's Agricultural Markets Law. And then under that, we have, from that authority, we've additionally passed, um, our own city code that we cite on. There's far more cats in the city than dogs, though, rest assured.
Right.
There are far more than they address.
Part of what I'm imagining is that most cat owners would not even need to avail themselves of the licensing. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to publicly say I won't license my cats if we pass this law, but if I license my cats, I'll put their licenses on a shelf because they never go outside because they know that they're not allowed to go outside. So, I, I don't know, I, I still don't, if, if the city is willing to enforce laws about licensing dogs, why wouldn't, and, and I'm not so much interested in punishing people for not licensing their cats as much as I am in finding a good, clean way to distinguish between the cat that you allow to go outdoors and the feral cat that you don't really claim, but you might feed every now and then, but you don't really claim it as your cat. Does that make sense, Mr. Warren, what I'm trying to get at?
I understand the remedy you're trying to solve. Unfortunately, my answer is licensing, again, it's a pure volume thing. We don't have the resources to go after everybody for not licensing a cat in the city of Utica. Um, as far as, again, your, your problem that you're trying to solve, what do you do if you impound the neighbor's cat? Again, I think between chips, tattoos, collars, and that you're gonna do some kind of a targeted enforcement. And again, remember, when you do something civilly, you're not doing this beyond a reasonable doubt. It's a much lower threshold, okay? It's a proper standard, okay? So then, your neighbor's complaint saying, hey, there's a lot of cats here, send the animal control officer over and start on trapping these things. You're, 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 you can do that civilly because you're not under that higher criminal standard. Um, that would be, and that's why I'm, essentially, that's the way you-
That helps me much, that helped me very much, that last thing you said, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask if the other council, I know we have animal control on. I don't know if they have any remarks. I know we have the co-commissioner on, I don't know if he has any remarks. I'm gonna ask if the council has any remarks. And then I know, I'm seeing that this is not going to be solved tonight, but I also will, will say as chair that I do not want to have another committee meeting unless we have a legislative outcome. Because at the end, they were legislators, right? You know, until we can have something that can stand in court and something that makes sense in terms of, um, you know, really, really addressing this issue. And I think everybody feels the same way. Any other comments or concerns before you have a 27-minute bathroom break before pre-calc? Everyone's good. Now, we do have another piece of legislation in, in committee, but I think that that is going to be, um, I think that that is roped into the overall, um, uh, codes, um, overall city code packet that's under 78 pages that we're gonna be looking at and reviewing and critiquing, um, in the near future. Councilperson Friend, do you, um, are you just gonna keep this in committee? And ju- just as, just in case or, or, you know?
Am I gonna keep what, am I going to keep what in committee? Yeah, I'd like to keep, yes, I'd like to keep that in committee for the time being, yes, thank you.
If nothing else, all the council people are clear. In terms of action steps out of this, I, I do think though that, um, not just in reference to feral cats, but there are a number of nuisance, um, um, issues that the city is having. Um, I know in my district, um, we're, we're having issues with, um, um, uh, drug homes next to, uh, uh, homeowners and all sorts of activity. I mean, we, we have fireworks, um, legislation coming up tonight. So I, I do think that there are a number of nuisances. And I think that if there, um, is to be a task force, I think it should be on the basis of just nuisance abatement, um, in the city and how we address those very complex legislative issues of, um, neighborhood and community nuisances. So that, 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 that's where I am in terms of a task force.
I, I would just like to say, we haven't solved, we haven't moved the needle at all. Other than deciding that we're not gonna ban, that we're not gonna ban feeding them. I don't see how we've moved the needle at all on the feral cats.
I, I agree 100%. I mean, my other colleagues that are on the line here, the reason I, I wanted this, do all of you guys have district? And I have three at-large people there. Do, do, any of you have any ideas on what we can come up with? That's, that's what I'm trying to ask. All, all I'm trying to do is help the people who have these bad problems and- Okay?
This is, uh, Mark Williamson.
In response to what I said, uh, Councilman Beatrice, you said in response to what I said, there are not cats. So there are a lot of cats. You're telling the councilmen and me and the Corporation Council that we're talking about a, a small number and group where you are the councilman and the Councilman Friend has a like problem where she is, uh, presiding, then it might be that her suggestion that this Central New York SPCA might be able to solve the problem for both of you if they would be willing, uh, to come in here under some agreement and, uh, take these feral cats and, uh, do whatever they think, uh, is in a humane or legal way, uh, to rid your constituents and Councilman Friend's constituents of the problem. I, when I said thousands of cats, I'm saying that when you talk about licensing, there are or in Utica legally that are the pets of people. And, uh, that is diverting one problem to a different area altogether. But if you're saying, and I think you have said it over and over, you have a specific problem and now Councilman Friend says she has a problem. I don't know about Councilman Moody or anybody else.
Every, every district, every district-
If that is so, then, then I think that's what should be investigated. Because I think that's a doable thing because it doesn't revolve criminality. It doesn't involve the criminal law. It's just ma- a matter of a resource that we can use and is willing to help, uh, in that regard. And evidently, Councilman Friend has talked to, uh, I presume, the people in the Central SPCA and maybe we can work something out with them that we can actually put down, you know, your, your tracks and resolutions for cooperative agreements with both of yous. You're seeing one cooperative agreement with the state of New York.
Can I, can I ask, I, I'd like to ask Matthew Williams. I'd like to ask Mr. Matthew Williams to weigh in here.
Before, uh, before Matthew Williams, it's, it's, uh, Councilman, uh, uh, Mark Williamson.
Yeah, that's, uh-
Um, so, I mean, I, uh, when, when I've talked to the SPCA-
No, 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 before, Matthew, before you go, it's, uh, Councilman Mark Williams to have the floor.
Thank you, um, we had that, we saw that one legislation that was passed up in Plattsburgh that was kind of passed around and it passed up there. Um, and then, and I got in here a little bit late, um, but Zach was talking, you know, this, that and everything else, so I understand where he's coming from. But then, uh, uh, Attorney Warren, did you see the, the Plattsburgh legislation that was passed?
I have not reviewed it.
You have not reviewed it? Uh, I'm asking, do you have it, Councilman Moody?
I don't, I don't have the Plattsburgh one.
Joe, you still have it?
I, I have it, I'm gonna have to find it, uh, I believe I have it.
And, uh, if you can get that to Zach Warren because that passed their, uh, their legislative, uh, uh, thing. So maybe that could be a direction, uh, but they, it passed, it must have passed the sniff test for their attorneys as well. So I know Plattsburgh is probably a lot smaller and more rural than, than we are, but I don't know, they, they, it looks like they came up with a nice plan.
Mr. Warren, uh, um, one question I have, could we, could, I'm trying to find legislative outcomes because I'm taking notes. Could we potentially say, um, if you, if you want to, if you want to, uh, 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 feed feral cats, you have to do it in this way. You have to have a fence, you have to have a feeding house, you have to have, you know, yacht, blase, blase. And if you don't do it in that way and sit in city limits, then we can, we can find it because it's not a, it's not a, the proper way that, that you're supposed to be doing it.
Again, my answer is gonna be the same. You cannot criminalize this.
So your only response is impound, impound these cats?
You need to look at civil remedies like I believe the judge has suggested. I think many other of the councilmen and councilwomen here have suggested. This is not criminal conduct.
So what makes this criminal, the fining?
Yeah, the fact that, yeah, there's a notice order, it's gonna be a charge, put into court for fines, yes.
No, 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 picking that out, taking out the court aspect. Just if it is, just if it is, if you do this, we're gonna fine you, right? Not courts, not, not the courts, but just if you do this, we're gonna fine you. Could we, could we license and permit that way?
Because you can't find somebody without taking them to court. They have a 14th Amendment procedural due process right to be heard. They're assumed not guilty until proven, or excuse me, they're assumed innocent until proven guilty. So you can't just sue a spot he has a municipality, say, we're gonna go around and fine. That's patently unconstitutional.
All right, I hear you. I think the animal control person, uh, Matthew Williams.
Yeah, I mean, when I've responded with the SPCA to some of these calls, especially in, uh, Councilman Beatrice's area, they've even mentioned that, you know, they're very overcrowded with their cats and they really didn't have much to offer as far as trapping and, uh, you know, removing. They just didn't have much to offer as far as that was concerned. I, I'm surprised that they told you that.
So do you have anything to weigh in with?
Um, not, not at this moment.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, so, so I, I do, I do agree with, uh, Councilperson Friend and Councilman Jill Beatrice in terms of moving the needle. I think the problem is that, um, as the corporate council is saying, you can't hold none of this stuff up in, in court.
Councilman Moody, Councilman DeBrenner.
Yes, sir.
I've been listening to all this. Is there any way that we as a council, at individual districts, can get a list of the problem homes that we're having? First of all, so we have a complete list. And then maybe we could directly send them something as a mail or a letter or something stating, you know, with the issues that we're, we're dealing with. And maybe we can just inform them, you know, proper protocol for all this and stuff. But maybe if the SPCA does jump in, we could let them know that they'll be getting involved and this is what we're planning on doing in the future. I think maybe we could at least notify the, the persons that are feeding these cats. And maybe if there's a half a dozen or there's 15 homes, whatever, we can go directly to them and say, this is what we're planning on doing, this is the complaints we're, we're, we're receiving and, and here's how we're gonna maybe try to resolve it in the future. That's, I just wanted to throw that out there.
And that's, and that's Parmiton Road, it's a road, there's a bunch of houses on that one. So yeah, I mean, get that information out to them, I guess, I didn't sound like it.
That's a great, that's a great idea.
But then, you know, you got, you got individual houses, but then you got, you know, streets, small streets that are dealing with it.
Right. I think, I think that's a great idea. And in, and in places like Philly and other places who have had these nuisance task force, um, the main component has been like they have a complaint aspect where they do that type of stuff where they, you know, folks can complain about a home or whatever. And then that council person can send a letter and then, you know, start the process of reaching out and saying, hey, this is the issue, uh, 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 how can we fix it?
Can I say something, Delvin?
Yes, sir.
Um, the only thing I, I would say to that is, we've reached out to some of these homeowners and the people that own the houses, I mean, generally in our experience as a food department, um, have been non-compliant. They don't want to be part of the, the solution. They think it's okay what they're doing. They think that they're providing life for the cats. And as far as, you know, regulating the feces, the smell, we can do that anyway. The issue is, you know, we take it and they clean it up and, and it's the same thing. And then the third thing that I wanted to say is, it's hard for, at least when it comes to codes, I, I don't know about animal control, to make the distinction between feral cats and domestic cats. For us, whatever you conjure up, to me, it has to apply to all cats. Because then I can see that you're doing illegal. So you don't want to feed cats outside. Then I could say, well, you're feeding cats outside, you can't do that, that's cat food. But if, once it becomes feral, then I have to distinguish between cats. And it's, it's hard to do that. That's all, those are the distinctions.
May I? May I? Again, and I don't mean to eat a dead horse, that's not a good metaphor in the context, but that's why I like the licensing, because I don't want to talk about feral versus unferal. I want to talk about the cats that people are willing to say, those are my cats and the cats that have been abandoned because nobody has claimed them, because nobody has licensed them. Again, I, that's, because I do think the whole feral distinction, so a fa- a cat can be feral by anybody's definition, but somebody might say, yeah, but it's my feral cat and I like taking care of them. And in fact, we know all the bad nuisance problems that Joe has done a good job of describing, but there are also people doing a good job taking care of feral cats who, who feed them appropriately, who offer them shelter, who do it in ways that don't make a nuisance to their neighbors, who don't do it with very many. Somebody said, you know, the little old lady who feeds the cats outdoors. Those cats might be feral and yet some people are taking good care of them and they're not a problem to anybody. So I agree with Marcus, with Mr. Phillips, that we shouldn't be thinking about feral. I think we should think about abandoned versus non-abandoned. And from my point of view, the licensing is a way to establish the idea that some cats are abandoned. There, no one has claimed them and licensed them and other cats are not abandoned, they have a license.
All right, so next steps is this, um, if everyone agrees with that, I want to move this along. Um, Councilman Beatrice, you're gonna send us the legislation or send this, uh, clerk the legislation from, um, was it Littlefar? I couldn't remember the place.
Plattsburgh. Plattsburgh, Plattsburgh, yeah.
Yes, from Plattsburgh, we'll look at that. I think that collectively between that with Corporation Council and our, uh, judge, um, 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 we can maybe put something together that makes sense, that could stand in court, um, that looks at the licensing, because that's what a lot of people seem to be liking, the licensing and, and the permit aspect of it.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Cool. No other comments, everyone is good?
I, I just might have one comment, it's Councilman LaMedico. I mean, right now we have a leash law for dogs, right? What, I, I don't see the difference why, you know, you gotta keep your dog inside. Uh, Celeste keeps her cats inside. So these cats shouldn't be outside and what they should be picked up. And if it requires euthanasia or something else, you gotta take these cats off the street. These cats are killing thousands of birds every year. They're killing turkeys in, in the woods, they're destroying the environment right now. I'm not saying euthanasia is the best way to go, but people have to take their cats off. It, it, if you see somebody that their cat is on the lawn, you need to approach them, people, tell them to bring their cat in. Now, once these people want to bring 20 cats in, let's see how long they're gonna want to take these cats. I mean, this is, we're letting, we're letting the, we're letting this get away from us.
Exactly, Jack.
And every day it's gonna be worse. Our cats, cats do not belong on the street no more than a dog does. They're destroying the environment, they're killing, they're killing the, 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 the turkey population in New York State is going down. The bird population in New York State is going down. They wreak havoc on our environment and we're just, and, and we're feeding them. It's absolutely disgraceful and, and, and everybody's a little too weak need to do anything about it. Well, hey, listen, if you get me, I'd take care of it. But people might not like it. But you know what, if you own a cat, keep them inside. And that's the bottom line on that. And that's just how I feel. I'll go with anything you guys want to go with. But I mean, the bottom line is we really know what has to be done. I'll go with anything you guys want to go with. But I mean, the bottom line is we really know what has to be done. I'll end it there.
Jack, thank you. Jack, thank you very much for saying that. I agree with you 100%. And that's the reason I'm trying to tie everybody in together. Because, you know, when everybody's pulling the rope together, you can get something done.
Nobody's gonna agree on this, Joe.
Right.
Screaming if you tell them that you got to keep your cats inside. Just getting away from, when I was young, if you picked up a dog and the dog was in the pound for so many weeks, or that dog was taken care of, you know, I'm not saying I'm a fan of it, but it took care of the problem. Now, today, everybody is so liberal, hey, let everybody, let live. And now we're getting overrun with this garbage out there. I think it's absolutely ludicrous.
It is. It is.
And I'm sure you've seen some of the locations that I'm talking about, so you know what I'm facing.
You're going in. Listen, I got a cat sleeping on my front door. I don't know whose cats these are. It's ridiculous. Now, if I had a dog sleeping out on my front door, if I had a dog sleeping on my front door, I'd call the pound to come pick him up. And the owner would come pick him up. You're not gonna get that. This has gotten away from us, and I really don't see a reason. Because that cats are gonna have more cats. They're gonna have more cats. And when you let them out and you neuter them and let them out, they're still gonna kill birds. They're still gonna kill the wildlife out there. They're still doing just as harm as if you clipped them or if you didn't clip them.
I agree.
Well, Councilman Beatrice, I say, I think the avenue is you got to give a corporate counsel to see what's gonna hold up in court. Because anytime, you know, we pull something up, they say, we can't enforce it. We won't enforce it.
Right.
Oh, he's afraid to touch it.
Right.
That's right.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Thank you so much, Delvin. Thanks all you guys for joining the meeting. I appreciate it.
All right. I'm gonna call this adjourned at 5:51. And council president or really majority leader will be back at 6:00.
Thank you.
Hey, we staying on this line or we going to a different?
I'm gonna call this pre-caucus caucus meeting to order. How does everyone, do we want to start off?
So 10 cases of IC.
Yeah, we'll have 11. I don't know. Let's start off with Tony and Stephanie Wears with our presentation on the stormwater or get right into the agenda. Anyone?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever anyone wants.
Okay. Let's start off with the presentation first that we there. So whoever wants to start with that?
Okay. My name's Stephanie Wears. I work for the City Utica Engineering Department. And then I just want to go over a list here of the works that's been done based on the October 2019 flooding. I'm gonna start with North Utica and work my way. To give everyone an update, although it is not cities, Riverside Center, we've been meeting with monthly and getting updates. So to share that with you, the mall has hired National Water Main to clean and televise the two 60-inch lines at the north end, as well as the portion leading to River Road. After they have done the cleaning, I have good and noticed that the outfall in the DOT right-of-way south of River Road, where that water daylight needed some cleaning. So they are scheduled, they said they were gonna be doing it this week to eliminate any.
Has joined the meeting.
The full flow. We also did the 600 block Crosby. We televised the sewer lines root cut and repaired the section that was broken due to roots. That was backup related as well, so we fixed that problem. We also cleaned some catch basins and televised stormlines running to Locust Drive and also Locust Drive to Riverside Center, just to make sure there was nothing wrong on our end. After the storm, we had hired Bray Construction to do some of the bigger work. And they started up at. Where they re-profiled and excavated upstream of the road between Gimble and Brody up in the North Utica Park. They also went across at North up at Woodbury, removed sediment accumulated in the drainage ditch from North up Eastilly all the way to the underground pipes that go under the parking lot of the park. And then on the other side of the street, we re-profiled that Eastilly portion right up through to Robin Road. Where at Robin Road, we extended two culvert, 30-inch culvert pipes, stabilized it with riprap to reduce the pitch of any banks, minimizing future erosion. On the northern side of that, we also cleaned and created some storage space for heavy rain events to help things move more gradually. In addition to that, we had installed an asphalt swell to capture and properly drain the road runoff into the waterway. So that way, we don't have any other erosions coming on from the sides, because North Utica unfortunately doesn't have curbing. East of Brody Drive on Herkimer Road, Bray excavated the drainage ditch right from Herkimer Road to the thruway right-of-way. I also called the maintenance of the thruway, and they had expressed that they had cleaned both sides of their right-of-way, north and south of the thruway. And I also had emails going through to the Canal Corp in an effort to let them know the work that the city has done to emphasize that no matter how much we clean, if the downstream portion is blocked by sediment or overgrown growth, ultimately, it still prohibits the water from going to its final destination at the river or the canal. So they have pushed that up to try and get some work done to help us out getting all of our water to smoothly leave. That also is the case for 1414 Herkimer Road near the church there. Bray excavated the drainage ditching to thruway right-of-way and installed a berm to contain the drainage to the designated route. So the water doesn't overflow and go down into the basement of the church. Just to back up, on Herkimer Road, just east of Brody Drive, we have also hired Central New York Construction, who's been out there since Monday, to clean the two culvert pipes under Keys Road. During that cleaning, we found a collapsed pipe in the shoulder westbound lane. And we are prepared to fix that area next Monday. Herkimer Road at Sunny Brook Lane near the Canon Unit Place, Bray excavated the drainage ditching as well and removed the minimal sediment that was present in the box culvert. Very little was done, or was played in that underground culvert. It was pretty clear. Up at Brightwater Farms in the Deerwood area, Bray excavated the drainage ditch, the trash rack, and re-established retention area upstream to capture sediment and reduce the volume in heavy rain events, which ties into the Georgetown Ave area. National Water Main spent about six to eight weeks cleaning from Keys Road right up through to the Georgetown dead end and removed the sediment in the pipe to about 1,200 feet. And then to follow up with that, we had Bray excavate the outfall at Keys Road and re-profile that about 500 feet downstream, just to make sure everything can move smoothly. In addition to that, down at the dead end of Georgetown, we had central paving installed, catch basin, and connect it into our storm drain system. So that way, in the event that the two houses on the end do get overflow ground, or overland flow, that water can be captured and right into our storm system. So that way, they aren't experiencing heavy backups in their property. Mapledale Ave, we re-profiled the drainage from Elmhurst to the intersection of Rose Clare and northerly portion up to the underground piping. We cleared out the growth and found that we had the Gabion stones in place, so we kept those on that side. But on the northerly portion, we stabilized the banks with riprap to minimize future erosion and re-profiled that to help the homeowners have better comfort in knowing that the creek that was originally moving so close to their property line and had the potential of knocking down their fence. We relocated the creek back to its original location to help flow smoothly right into the pipes that go underground in that Elmhurst. This is a little follow-up from earlier in the year. On Chatten Road, there was a storm pipe repair at the bridge where the stormline connects, and we fixed that right at the Reels Creek earlier this year. If anyone has any questions, feel free to interrupt. This is just the progress here for North Utica. And I'm going to start into South Utica now. Obviously, everyone knows about Onidashmi at Arlington, Harris.
Yes, Stephanie. I just, this is Councilman Beatrice, and I just want everybody on the call to know. And obviously, you know, I know, if any of yous ever want to take a walk through these locations, I've visited every one of these locations, and I've talked to Stephanie and the Mr. Mahoney. They've done a, it's unbelievable job, if you've seen the job that they've done in these locations. I got to tell you, I've lived in North Utica my whole life, and I've, you know, grew up here, and I've never seen anything like it. So I could take pictures. I have some pictures. If any of yous, the guys, are interested, I'll send them to you. But thank you very much for everything you've done, Stephanie. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I hope that I spoke with a lot of homeowners in that area. And they've reiterated some of the same points that you've had, that they've lived there for so long, and they are very impressed with the work that's being done, and they feel a lot more comfortable moving forward.
One last thing, Louise, I've developed a relationship with her from the lady who takes care of the mall. She's very, very responsive to other stuff, too, where neighbors have contacted her. So it's pretty good that we have open dialogue. And again, thank you.
Thank you. To move forward, we have South Utica, Oneida Street at Arlington. We replaced, or. We replaced or fixed the hull wall that the northerly portion, yes, northerly portion and installed the trash rack to help eliminate any blockages from entering the storm system. We've actually loaded the daylight area and as everyone knows, that's one of those type of locations that require frequent attention. Dave Short does have that on the list to have an excavator there when possible between Halix Ravine and there to make sure that we can keep the sediment to a minimum. Onida Street at Eastwood, Kensington, Marlborough, Patricia Lane, Fairview Heights, right down to Genesee Street, we cleaned and televised catch basins, the storm line and the sanitary lines right through Eastwood, Kensington, Marlborough. Right for the storm, it goes to the outfall on Marlborough where we had MCI extend a portion of the outfall pipe and put riprap in to help stabilize that outfall. There was no real issue there currently, but it was an effort to help mitigate and be prepared for any future damages that could come. Just so everyone's aware, that wasn't something that was causing any flooding, it was more so a proactive measure to make sure what it doesn't cause a greater deal down the road. In televising all of the sanitary rooms, we did find a small portion that had a slight collapse. It was still functioning at about 80%, but knowing the flooding circumstances in that area, we had fixed that portion of the sanitary line on Marlborough right before Patricia Lane just to make sure we can have all pipes flowing at full capacity. As they followed their way down the path of the sanitary, they televised and cleaned the Fairview Heights down through to Genesee Street. Some sections did need some root cutting, so we got rid of any of those obstructions to help maintain flow. Halix Ravine, we repaired and replaced the trash rack east of Genesee Street before going underground. Over at Brookline Drive from Sequoit Creek, that drastically flooded and a lot of the system, both sanitary and storm, was filled with sediment as a direct result of that October flooding. The city responded by cleaning and televising the catch basins, the storm and sanitary, to restore that capacity, including Ogden, Dearborn, Brighton and Milton Place right up through. Just so everyone's aware, I know DPW does have the flush trucks and they do a lot of the cleaning, but for this extensive work, we wanted to make sure that we can observe that the, that the pipes were clean and nothing was damaged. So National Water Main was the one who did all of that work for us throughout the areas where I mentioned some excess cleaning. Eastwood Drive, the lower portion, three years ago, we had a backup and we had root cut a lot of that section. We did receive a phone call from the homeowner expressing that it was happening again. So we had that line cleaned and televised and found out a lower portion of Eastwood, right around Arlington, needed some root cutting. So we had taken care of that immediately. Floral Court, just along the edge of the city, we had re-profiled and removed green waste in the storm drainage ditch from the dead end at the circle of Floral Court to Floral Drive. A lot of homeowners are very happy to see a lot of that green waste and debris that has accumulated over the years, even self-inflicted that they admitted. But as a reminder, I keep letting all the homeowners know the value in, in following the regulations and the rules that we put out for green waste. I know it doesn't seem like much, but some of these situations are as simple as just barreling your green waste so that way in the events of rain, it doesn't trickle its way down to somebody who has a catch basin and it creates that blockage. Sometimes, yes, we do have capacity issues, but I would say more times than not, it's really just the water is obstructed and is not capable of getting into our system. So just being mindful to bucket that and barrel it when you can, even grass clippings and little things like that will make all the difference during these heavy storms. Which leads me to Sherman Drive, we cleaned the catch basins and televised the stormlines right in that little dip of Sherman Drive near MVCC. After, after investigating, no issues were found, I pulled all the manholes myself right through MVCC around the new gym, down to the crack where then travels to the Smoosh Factory Creek Outfall. I opened all the manholes and found no sediment and no obstructions, the same amount of flow as we worked our way downstream and looked up the outfall right at Starch Factory Creek and it is, it is as clean as I could imagine it to be. So I'm not completely sure of that area, more so just knowing that it's that green waste on the catch basins that prohibit a lot of the flow from getting into the pipe.
Stephanie, Councilman DeMarango here. Just a quick question. Good, good, just a quick question, you know, 1212, I believe 1212 Sherman, I mean, I mean, they had a full flooded basement right to the ceiling. I know it's a low spot there, I walk by there every time, every, a lot of times. Is there any way you could eliminate some of that water flow? I know the catch basins, but divert it some way or something because those people, I mean, every time we get a heavy rain, that, that basement starts filling up, I was just
Yeah, I spoke with the board about that as well and I recently even drove by and I wish I took a picture now in hindsight. There is green waste right, there has been in the past, I'm not saying right specifically every rain event, but there is green waste that a lot of times when DPW does respond, it's literally going out there and just moving the stuff off the, off the cover. It's not really a capacity issue that we are aware of. I have a list of spots that I want to personally go and visit during a heavy rain event just so I can see it for myself and pull covers and check the flow, just to be 100% sure. But based on our, the pipe there is significant in the drainage and despite some bends and all of that, there's really nothing that restricts that flow. So at this point, I don't know for sure if there's, there's a solution directly to help him other than to make sure green waste is, is frequently removed and it's unfortunate to say that that's the answer for him, but at this point, we all just need to be proactive and make sure as much water as possible can go into the system. And we are looking into, into Starch Factory Creek and further downstream to make sure that there's no other issues. But even at the outfall itself, it doesn't appear to have any sediment or buildup there. If anything, the only thing we could think of is that maybe Starch Factory Creek gets so full that it's hard for that to completely discharge into it. But again, nothing, I physically don't know for sure if that's actually what's happening or not. But we are, we are looking to help and we've looked and investigated this significantly. It is a concern of ours, obviously, to have somebody keep flow and vehicles move during rain events and stuff like that. We are looking to see what we can do, but at this point, the system that's in place is functional and DPW's response notes that it's literally cleaning the catch basin cover is what would help reduce that, that river that comes through.
All right, thank you, thank you.
One time they found a piece of plywood laying right on top of that and once they were able to lift it up off the cover, it, it all sucked right down. But again, it is on the list still to see for ourselves and to be able to explore and investigate other options. But at this point, no, I'm sorry.
All right, very good, thank you.
Pond Lane at Albino Street, I know that has some water there occasionally. We cleaned the catch basin and televised and we're looking to finding a way to connect that into the storm system. But it's more of like a stump at that spot, so we did have that sucked out. White Birch, Ruskett Bush and Candlewood is always an issue of concern that our office has taken very seriously. I don't personally work hand-in-hand with Jean directly, but I hear a lot and see it on his desk that he has done some drainage upgrades and designed it and he has approved them to be able to put them out for bid next construction season. In the meantime, we have
When you say next construction, construction season, what's the timeframe, spring?
Yeah, usually by spring, we'll have it out to bid for them to do the work in the summer. Mike Mahoney, is that an accurate statement?
Is there any way that we could at least clean out the culverts up there on, on White Birch? You know, there's the culverts on the side of the road, we did take a walk, a few councilmen at large, Councilman Mello, we did take a walk through the district. If we could just get like a backhoe or something up there, maybe clean up the culverts on the side of the road, that would at least help a little bit and then it can get into the larger stuff in the spring. But, you know, just, we're looking for some action immediately if we get it.
Hey Frank, this is Jack Lamedico, Councilman Lamedico. Hey, listen, I, I took a ride up there with, with the engineer department with Mike, with Mike Mahoney and he, he did direct Stephanie to clean out some of the culverts on the bottom. But what, what he had told me is that, that Gene Santa Cruz is gonna, has a plan. He, he gave me his word and that early, the first thing next year, they're going to start working on it and redoing that. Stephanie, what, what did you see on those plans that you think is going to re-establish the, the correct water flow in that area?
Yeah, as I expressed, I haven't really looked into it, I've done all of these sites watching and inspecting, so I'm not really spending too much time in the office, but I am
But you did, yeah, but you did suck out the, the storm drains on the bottom, I saw you did that and
Yeah, but we did clean a couple of those locations, I think there was probably six of them. And they did get some binder over on the shoulder at Hills Drive and Ruskett Bush and in effort to stop that erosion until we can get over there in the spring. And that should eliminate that concrete debris that goes into the driving lane.
Now Frank, I'm not sure if next year, during the budget season, if we actually allocate money for that particular project or not, if we actually could to make sure it gets done.
Well, we'll put the, Jack, we'll put a request in for the funds to do the work.
Yeah, I got you, Mike.
It's, it's going to be up to you guys to keep the money in there.
Right, well, we'll make sure that, that, and you had given me a figure and we'll make sure that, that money's in there for, for when it does happen.
Yeah, and just so you know, I did ask Gene to look at his design again, just to fine tune his number.
Okay, I would have asked you, but I thought you had signed off the system, I heard you had signed off, apparently.
No, I did it by mistake.
Oh, okay.
So I just dialed back.
I thought you heard me getting on, you were getting off real quick. Thank you. But anyways, Mike, thank you and I appreciate you doing that work and hopefully next year, we could clear the, the problem up there.
Very good, I think we should email the gentleman back who was complaining there, I think with all our names on it, let him know what progress is taking place.
I have, I have emailed him. He just doesn't like my answer.
All right.
I'll leave it at that.
You gotta buy your lunch.
I got a question, Mark Williamson, I got a question. Hello?
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah?
Hey, so we're, like you said, we did White Birch, we did Pond Lane and, you know, a couple of us went back behind Pond Lane and, and Jack noticed there's pipes coming out of the hill from the Frankfurt side. I'm not, is that legal, Mike, do you know of or?
Yeah, I mean, it's just like we take New Harpens water and Deerfield water at Utica's at the bottom of the hill. Last time I knew, water flows downhill.
Yeah, I know, I understand. Are you gonna actually dig behind Pond Lane? Is that, is that part of the thing where you're gonna be digging behind the houses and building like a half a trench or something or?
You know, that, that's a, that's a further discussion, to tell you the truth.
That's a further discussion?
I think that's an engineering issue, Mark, that they'd probably have to sit down and figure out.
You got, you got problems there because it's private land, it's not owned by the city. So I gotta get access to them to do anything all through there, so we have an access issue. So, something we certainly will work on.
If we get permission from the people, I mean, could you actually dig a good-sized culvert back there or something?
You'd dig, you would dig a trench, we wouldn't put a culvert in, because you want to catch the water, culvert would keep it out.
Yeah, I'm sure it's something that would need to be surveyed and Gene would have to look into what he would want to have done there as well. Because although it is an access issue too, I think we don't want to create another problem somewhere else as well, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, I don't know, we've kind of been talking about since, I've been on the council almost seven years, so. All right.
I have one other location in East Utica that I think people would be interested in, at Culver Ave at Dwyer and Melme's. Earlier in 2019, we cleaned and televised the catch basin and storm line that tie into the Starch Factory Creek. We repaired a storm, this part of the storm pipe to properly allow flow. What was happening was the catch basin wasn't able to fully drain, so it was surcharging during rain events, even in the winter as well and we saw a lot of ice buildup, so that's an area that was resolved. West Utica doesn't really have much water issues because most of theirs is, the storm is underground. But to not leave anybody out, we want to mention the Mohawk Valley Hospital doing, drawing through storm systems over in that area. The city could be putting out a project soon to eliminate one of the, yeah, so overflows, let's call it later this year. We do our wet weather and drought weather inspections that are performed as scheduled through the Speedy's permit based on the place that it is. We've televised New Street at Sunset, nothing was really found there. And we also work with DOT in suggesting the removal of the 50-foot concrete barrier, barrier in our burial to relieve overland flow from that Easterly portion. There's still some work that needs to be done, obviously, we're all aware of that, the list never ends. To tie up some of the creek issues, we have Maple Dale at Elmhurst from Deerfield Drive. East and Elmdale to re-profile from the track upstream about 500 feet. I was able to find the contact for the woman who owns the property across from the school and she was kind enough to allow access, which allows a lot of homeowners to not have their property be disturbed and we can really be able to get in there and profile the creek rather than just do our normal cleaning of the trash rack. So once funds become available, we'll be able to re-profile that and tie into that pipe a lot smoother which will only eliminate some sediment that continues to go downstream through Maple Dale and, and out through that way. Anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
I, I do, this is Celeste Friend. So I have two, first of all, I want, I mean, I think a lot of people on the council already know this, but Stephanie Wertz is an enormous asset to this city. She works incredibly hard, she's really diligent, she puts in more than a 40-hour week. She deals with, with residents who are frustrated and anxious about flooding and, and she deals with them very, I don't know, she deals with them really well and I really appreciate all that she does on behalf of my constituents, but also all of your constituents. So I just wanted to, to give Stephanie a really big shout-out. Patty Fergel said she's the perfect woman for the job. Okay, but here's my question, and so it's not on your list, so two things. One, in terms of that remaining work, what are you doing at the intersection of, say, Stores and Greenwood? And that's Patty Fergel's neighborhood, what's, what's going on there?
I'm really sorry, in the list, I forgot to put that on there. So I think, forgive me guys, there's been a lot, so I did put Stores left. We had cleaned and televised the storm line on Stores Ave that ties into Greenwood and we found that there was a collapse in the pipe that was restricting the flow. There is a depression as well, the catch basin crossover connection had a failure. So DPW fixed the crossover connection to the catch basin and about 50 feet downstream of that was where the storm had collapsed. It's where a national grid gas service was actually kind of going through. So national grid was there and they relocated it and then we restored the pipe. So that portion was, we also found further down while I was there, I couldn't help but notice another depression. So I investigated and found that another crossover down, I'm drawing a blank at what that next street down is. So Baker Ave had a crossover connecting outside that has an open hole, that is on the list for DPW. They already jackhammered it out, I just don't know for sure if they rebuild that basin. I don't know how you noticed, on the other side, while we're there, they might as well do another adjustment on the other side that looks like it was caving in as well. So those are the portions we're done and then once those stormlines downstream are completely restored, which DPW's finishing up, I'm going to have National Water Main come back because there's actually a storm line that goes through behind Patty's house that is city's responsibility. And they already cleaned the catch basin, but they wanted, they wanted, we're going to have them clean and televise from that middle where the two, all the properties join in the backyard. where the two, all the properties join in the backyard out to Stores Ave, but with that extent, with that kind of cleaning, we didn't want to send any more water down into the area that was collapsed and create more of a void or more sediment coming in from that section, so, um, that's the last, that for the pending work is to have that portion cleaned and televised, just to make sure if there's any issues, it's resolved.
Okay, so you're gonna, so you're gonna be going back there? Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, and then I have another sort of, a, a bigger question, so not, but where do we stand in terms of the Sequoit Creek, sort of the part of Sequoit Creek that, you know, the short section of it that runs through Utica, in terms of cleaning it out of some of its debris? And I, I know that we would not want to clean it out of everything in it because that would actually speed up the water, uh, which would, you know, faster water is more powerful. So, but where do we stand with the DEC in terms of getting some permitting to get in there and increase the, the capacity of that section of the creek so that it is less likely to overflow its banks, uh, the next time we get a heavy rain?
Yes, I also was getting ahead of myself and reading from memory instead of reading my sheet and that was also a bullet point that I happened to miss. Um, the city partnered with New Hartford for a engineering study to be performed and identify solutions for the Suakute Creek flooding. Um, they've been walking and doing diligent work out in most of New Hartford, but extended through the scope of the city to recognize the impacts that the water does have on us. Um, we did join the Sequoit Creek Basin Committee, um, and they give us monthly updates about that as well. And we are expecting to receive the report sometime in September or October and then once we have the report, to further address what the city can do, but no preliminarily what, what they're finding is there's some things that New Hartford can do to mitigate and, um, it's my understanding that the Harkimer County Planning Group there, um, in the county building is helping New Hartford find grant monies to be able to do that work. Um, so we're all trying to collaborate and work together to, you know.
Terrific.
To speed the water down right even before it gets into the city. Um, based on the little, we can have her through that with Rick Sherman. Um, it, it, it seems pretty confident that there is some options available that are feasible and could be a solution that the city will recognize the, and see the alleviation of that, um.
So, so in other words, the issue isn't so much cleaning out the various kinds of debris like the gravel beds and trees that exist within Utica? We want to go upstream and, and capture more of that water upstream or prevent even more water from getting upstream? That's more the solution that we hope we can?
I would have to say it's a little bit of both, but I think right now what we're doing is we're, we're waiting to see what the report says so that way they can help us identify what we need to do because again, we don't want to clean up a section and have the water go faster and now drown out white snow and everyone else until we can either minimize the water or slow it down, um, through New Hartford and then get direction on what we can do in our jurisdiction to be able to mitigate the problem safely.
Um, so. And that, we would be applying for a permit from the DEC at some point perhaps, right?
Right, yeah, that would be considered, that would be required DEC permitting, um, so once we have the study, it will help validate the work that needs to be done and what we feel needs to happen. Um, and in that area, I left out that we did replace the fence that was down and install the gate for future access into that with the intention of, once you receive the study, if there's something that the city can do, we have a way to get that equipment in and out smoothly.
Right, I, I went and looked at that fence just a couple of days ago and it looks great. I was very happy to see the gate there, I think that that's a big improvement and I thought that the gate, the, the new section of fence is terrific. That was, uh, I'm glad about that and I know that the people on Brookline are very glad to have that. Thank you very much, Stephanie, for everything that you do for the city.
I appreciate it, I appreciate everyone's support and helping and understanding and, and relaying the information to the homeowners that we are working diligently and, um, having the funds to be able to do this type of stuff, um, you know, trying to get, work with FEMA as well. It's, it's a great opportunity to really get the, the city back on a clean slate and so it's easier for us to create some maintenance plans. Um, I know Parks Department does do a, a good job when, when they have the manpower to be able to do that type of work, um, but to be able to eliminate that sediment and give them a clean slate suddenly, it's a lot easier for the years to come. Definitely a great opportunity that we were able to have.
Thank, thank you again, Stephanie, and, uh, thank you for coming and giving us this update. We really appreciate it and the people really appreciate it.
Absolutely, I'm glad to help.
All right, we're gonna get into our regular.
I would hope the media, I would hope the media would get, get this list and, and post it so a lot of people can see what is going on with the city and what the council people are pushing to administration and administration's working well with this and, and look, look what we are trying to accomplish here. It's, it is a big task and it takes time, but at least we, we got a great start. Thank you.
To, to the credit of what Councilman DeBrango just said, Stephanie, is this formatted in such a way where this can be forwarded to the media? Obviously, it's on the screen right now, it's being shared, um, so they already have it, but, um, is that, um, do you need additional formatting or can I send this, uh, to the media as part of the, uh, package?
Um, I can, also Ben, this is Heather Moitt. Um, I, the, the mayor intends to share this with the press. He felt it was important that he share it with you first, um, so we will be releasing this, um, um, tomorrow.
Okay, I mean, we're all clear, but it is being shared on the screen right now, the press.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, we're gonna move forward with ordinance number one. This is Councilmember Burmaster, intersections where stop required.
Have left the meeting.
We are going, Brayton Park Place and Westborough Street Southeast Corner, they're going to, um.
I believe that was last week's.
Yeah, yeah, we have, the last one is amending codes for the fireworks.
Higher code.
Yes.
Well, I printed up the wrong one.
Michael, just bring the next first piece up so Maria can read it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, it's, I was also gonna, Maria, if you just go to the 360 page, you can just click the pre-meeting packet, it'll pop up in your browser as well, if you need to zoom in on anything.
Yeah, hold on just one second. Okay, ordinance number one, Councilmember Miola and Moody. This is the fireworks.
Stephanie Worts.
Has left the meeting.
Would, is there any discussion regarding this?
Are you there, Maria?
Yep.
Okay, uh, basically, um, both, uh, the Councilman Moody and I, we asked the judge to, uh, do his diligence. Uh, he spent many hours on this piece of legislation to give it some teeth. Um, we all know the fireworks problems we had in the past. Um, this is our first step in the right direction and I'm just hoping that my colleagues would support it. Um, I do sometimes hear fireworks in the area occasionally and, uh, maybe this piece of legislation would, uh, be the best step forward to prevent of fireworks that are out of the, um, normal day of the Fourth of July.
Everyone good with this one?
I concur.
I'm fine.
The next one is resolution number two. It is for hazard pay for essential workers sponsored by Councilmember LaMedico, Miola and Friend. Any discussion on this one?
No, I think it's.
I'd like to make a full council.
I, I, yeah, yes, go ahead. Thank you, Frank.
Thanks, Jeff.
I was gonna say something, but you threw that right in there and I appreciate it. So I guess that's all it says. Does anybody disagree with the full council on this? All right, let's let it rip then.
Next one is ordinance number three. This is a transfer of funds from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. It is a.
This, this is actually what the, um, what Stephanie was presenting on, um, just sort of understanding, this is the infrastructure transfer for those, uh, works.
Okay, the next one is ordinance number four, the transfer of funds from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. It is from General City Hall Medical, Fire Medical, Police Medical in, to street lighting. It is in the amount of 550,945. Does anyone have any questions regarding this? The explanation is purchase closing of streetlights delayed from fall of 2019 to spring 2020, which led to the non-recognition of savings from, uh, facility charges.
Heather, are you still on? Is Heather Moitt on?
Doesn't seem so.
All right, 'cause the, the, I don't know if, uh, I can't remember if we had discussed this before, but, uh, this was supposed to close, the, we were supposed to take, uh, over the ownership of the streetlights back in October. Uh, what happened is the power company decided that they wanted to take a, another look at their, uh, street lighting to see if, if the, uh, somebody, I'm getting back dressed, somebody's talking on me or something. So they wanted to take a look at what the, their inventory was and they, and they thought that after looking at it, that, uh, they wanted additional money for their inventory of the streetlights, but by the time they got done doing the inventory, now we're, you know, we're, here we are way back in, you know, April, May, June and July, so we just had to pay them for all that back time that they still actually own the equipment.
Yes, Councilman, I, I, yes, Councilman, I'm on the, I am on the telephone, I just couldn't speak up quickly enough. Um, as Councilman LaMedico said, I also have, um, Marima on the telephone and Mike Mahoney to address any questions. This was, we were fully expected to, to move, this was something that National Grid caught on their end in the fall. They, they wanted to go back and do a complete inventory and so, um, you know, every month that went by, um, it costs $80,000 in lease facility charges.
And, and the beauty of this, this just shows you how much money we're actually gonna save in the long run.
Yeah, we're already saving. It's been great since we closed the beginning of May.
Yeah, so, how much do you think we saved since then?
We save about $84,000 a month, so beginning in May, so May, partially in May, June, July, I mean, we're just, we're saving. Part of that's already built in the 2021 budget for the savings, they left the same budget number, but, yeah.
Heather, Heather, this is Councilman Beatrice. How, how far along have, are they with installing the lights?
As of Friday, they were 10% done. We have about 7,500 lights, um, and they had completed, um, slightly over, over 750. Uh, as of today, they're probably closer to 850, so I think, and, and Mike, maybe you want to chime in here, um, I think it's expected to conclude the end of October, but do you want to add something, Mike?
I think Mike has left the meeting, so I'll repeat.
Okay, so I don't know, so we do expect it to be done by the end of October, um, and, um, like I said, we're probably 10 to 15% done at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Next one is ordinance number five. This is a transfer of funds from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. It is coming from the engineering salaries to engineering wages in the amount of 55,480 to reclassify salary to wages from job position that was not changed in 2020. Any questions regarding that? Next one is ordinance number six. It's a transfer of funds 2019 to 2020. It is from the police admin, uh, holiday and physician's fee to salaries and unused sick pay in the reclassification of 2021 to 2020 for police retirement payouts.
Just as a quick explanation for this one, um, Captain Nickel retired, he retired on March 28th, when I was going through some reconciliations with the Controller's Office, he was actually paid out in April, um, but, but we really owed him at the end of March, so this is just reclassifying something back to the, the 1920 budget.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that one? Ordinance number seven, it's a transfer of funds from 2019 to 2020 fiscal year. It is from the contingency fund to the planning contractual in the amount of 27,472. Um, this is to adjust for 30,000 incorrectly budgeted compared to prior years. Do you want to give any explanation on that one?
Yes, so historically, um, this, this account has been budgeted between 50 and 60,000 dollars. Sometimes it's used, sometimes it's not. It's mainly for chargebacks for different departments that do work for the planning department, um, and so when I was doing the budgeting for 1920, I budgeted at, at 30,000 and I, there were no department heads that thought that that was an issue, um, and then we found it was higher at the end of the year and that's just because of the substantial amount of activity that's gone on with the planning department in 1920.
Thank you. Any questions regarding this one? The next one is a resolution, it's resolution number nine, sponsored by Councilmember DeBrango. It is the New Act Regarding the Repeal of 50A of the Civil Rights Law Public Hearing. Uh, Councilmember DeBrango, do you want to speak upon this one?
Yeah, basically, uh, yeah, I'd like to have a public hearing in their next council meeting. Um, what I plan on doing, once we get the input from the public, what I like the council, you know, when we meet, is, uh, to have some input and maybe making some changes to the police budget. I know the, uh, the governor is looking, uh, for cities, uh, across the state to submit a plan and hopefully, uh, with some input from the public and the council, we can come up with some new, uh, ways of funding the police department and, um, I think it'll be, uh, I think it'll be good. Hopefully we'll get a good response from the public and see what they're looking for and then we can obviously put it in the next, next budget.
Yeah, I think one of the most, and this is Councilman LaMedico, I think one of the most important things, I'm gonna look at this, is how, how we could possibly take a look at the police department and, and adjust maybe the, uh, the manning issues on it to, to actually get more police officers on the streets. Right now, we have very few, you know, looking at the size of our city, I feel we have very few police cars on the street at this time and I think, uh, we should try to adjust it where we actually can get more police officers on the street and, and less, uh, on the administrative side. That's what I'm looking at right now.
Got to hire civilians.
Can I, can I ask something?
Sure.
So, um, so Councilmember DeBrango, is this the same public hearing that we, so this is, I take it, the same public hearing which we discussed if we were going to? This is about the governor's mandate that cities have to propose, have to, uh, put forward a, a plan to, to restructure and reform their police departments by April of 2021, correct?
Right, right, and I would like the council to have some input, obviously, we, we're gonna supply the funding, so we're gonna make recommendations. My, my plan is, once we get this hearing done with, uh, we have a sit-down with the administration, with the chief and, and the council and let them know what we think, what we think should be done and obviously, we're gonna need some feedback at some time and we can put it together. So I want to be a very large part of this.
So one concern I, I have about that is that, um, we're just putting, this is just one public hearing, the, the mandate from the governor actually requires public input, it's not optional, for has to be, um, input from the communities into the, into this police restructuring and reform and I don't see how one single public hearing by the common council, um, can accomplish that. That's, I'm not against this one, but I'm concerned that one, that merely one public hearing is not gonna be adequate to meet the governor's requirement that we get.
I agree, let's see what type of response we get, you know, we'll see how many people sign up, let's see if we could get, oh, I wish they would come to City Hall and actually speak in front of us, maybe by the next meeting, we'll be able to do that, but if, if not, you know, we have to move on it because we have to, the people, uh, the administration start putting their budget together in December, you know, so September, October, November, before you know it's gonna be, it's coming up pretty quickly, so I wanted to at least start now and if we have to have a second or third one, we could possibly do that, but let's get the ball rolling on it.
Councilman, can I make a recommendation on this?
Go for it.
Yeah.
Um.
If, if, if we can say a public hearing regarding police reform and public safety and not just the 50A, because the 50A is kind of a done deal, the police already dealt with that. But if we could just make it general in terms of, of police reform and public safety. And there's going to have to be a second public safety hearing later in the future because I'm on that Public Reform Advisory Board that the mayor put together. And we're developing a plan. I think we have a meeting next week. And once that plan is developed, then we'll be presenting that to the council as a whole in, you know, in general. So I think, I think if we could just make it broader now to just say police reform and public safety instead of, instead of, you know, the new act regarding the repeal of 50A, because the police have already, have, have already done.
Yeah. If the clerk is on, maybe she could post it that way, so it's, it's more to the public. I'm, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Can I, can I? Can I comment just briefly? Councilman Moody is 100% correct. I would just note that right now, the governor's executive order sustaining the open meetings law is in effect till September 4th, 2020. You have this set right now, September 2nd, 2020. So I would urge you, kick it out another week at this point.
Or could we even kick it out a month? Or could we even kick it out a month?
Serious question, Zach. What is having a public hearing within that executive order versus outside it have any precedent?
The deal is, you would just have to limit it to 50 people.
We're doing it electronically, so we.
Yeah, you, you would have to do it electronically, otherwise, which would be.
We have to anyhow, because we don't know that the mayor will open City Hall either. So we are fully prepared to have hundreds of people, you know, if people would like to speak in this. I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
I, I, I don't think that'll work. There's a lot of people that don't have computers and don't really know how to use them to get on this. I think this should be a mono, mono P. Get the people in front of us. Let's listen to them, see what they have to say about it.
All right, so you're there.
I, I, I agree with you. That's what you probably kick it out a month, you know, and get everything going, you know?
I think Jack's absolutely right.
Why don't we make it on September 16th? I mean, they're allowing us to have 500 people.
The, the only, the, the only thing that, that I would kick in and say, I think if the council does have it on the 16th, I think that might help the conversation that the mayor's having with the police advisory board. I, I actually think that this public hearing will actually inform them in some of the work that they're doing.
Donovan, when is that? When is their meeting there?
Well, it, it, right now, it's meeting monthly. So I know we have a meeting the 20th, and then after that, we're, I think.
Of August? Of August?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You don't know when the September one is, though?
Right, right. But I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's going to be like far after the 16th of September.
Good, so we should, we should, when he read your schedules, that we should make sure ours is before. That's a good thought.
Ticking it out for those purposes makes perfect sense, just amend it. But I just wanted to put out there that there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to have people in the city a week later. I'm just throwing that out there. So I just don't want, this is live streamed, this is a public meeting. We cannot guarantee we'll have people back in that, that council chamber in person.
Okay, so we are tentatively going to be moving forward to the second meeting in September with this.
That is correct. That's the 16th, I believe, right?
Yep.
Okay, won't bend that. Let's amend that.
But, but we're also amending it in terms of what it refers to, that it's not really about the repeal of 50A, but it's about the more general police reform as dictated by the.
Yes, absolutely.
Does the clerk have that? Is she on?
We'll need you to, we'll need you to dictate the amendments to the clerk so that they can be.
Right, are they there?
They are.
Okay.
Can I get some clarification on something?
Sure.
So this, so this, this police reform, this is now basically trying to defund the police like these other cities are trying to do, right?
No.
Okay.
Counsel, don't forget, 50A was both for police and fire, so we have to include both.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this one?
What, is, are we going to change it now or are we just going to do it later? Somebody's going to have to go in there and make this amendment now.
Is the clerk on?
Hold on, if we're, if we're not holding a public hearing until the middle of September, can we pass this at the September 6th meeting instead?
Well, we should just change the wording right now, though, so it's.
Okay, okay.
Both of the clerk on? You guys tell us the exact wordage? You guys tell us the exact wordage you want? And we'll make note of that.
Public hearing regarding, a public hearing regarding police reform and public safety in the city of Utica.
Police and fire?
Yes, we have to include police and fire because 50A includes both.
What, would public safety be an umbrella? I'm, I'm, I was just saying.
Correct.
Because, because it really isn't about 50A, am I, I thought, right? It's really.
Right.
Sure.
Councilman Moody is correct. There was an executive order at the same timing of the repeal of 50A, in which case we have to have this public hearing.
I, that was Councilwoman Friend who pointed that out. I just, sorry.
We've hit you on the back enough, all right?
To resolution number 10.
Let me step aside for a second and split these hairs.
Right. Resolution number 10. It's a resolution approving the shared services agreement with the Department of Transportation. Does anyone have any questions about this one, or should we have this one be full council?
Well, just, just a little background, this is Celeste's area. This is South Utica. In 2013, I think the city put in about a half a million into this area and they're still going strong. So I, I like to thank, well, once again, we thank their engineering department and they're working hard to try to fix the problems of our economy. Thank you again.
Do we want to do full council on this one?
I'd be willing to.
That's fine. I'm okay with, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Any nays?
Okay.
Full council, yeah.
All right. The next one is a resolution number 11. It's a resolution approving the intermunicipal agreement with BOSI's for automotive repair services. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this one?
Yeah, what are they going to do?
I can actually.
We're going to use BOSI's as a repair, right?
Yeah.
These, these are kids that are just starting out to.
No, they're, we don't even know if they're going to school.
These are not, these are not children. These are actual mechanics that work on the buses that BOSI manages. So these are actual adults that are fully trained on diesel mechanic, diesel mechanics. And so there was an opportunity for us to avail ourselves. And just as a comparison, Utica MAC, I called them this week, they charge about $120 an hour for any type of repairs that they do on, on, on all our MAC trucks. So this number of 5270 an hour is really, you know, it's half the price. And Dave Short, if you're on the line, could you unmute and, and maybe add something?
Did I ask you a question, Heather? And I don't think Dave can.
Sure, yeah.
Right, we do have mechanics that, that work for the city, am I right? I mean, we have several mechanics. So when you talk about automotive and truck repair and maintenance, maintenance is what? Changing oil, changing a light bulb, doing the, so can't we handle that ourselves, or?
Yeah, we're going to continue to handle that ourselves, but right now, so much of our fleet is, is, is really old and some of the significant problems with transmissions and, and some of the other things, some of our mechanics aren't really trained on it. And so this is an opportunity, instead of sending them out to a local repair shop, to utilize another government agency at a much reduced rate.
Okay, another question. Are any other cities or towns or villages using BOSI's in the manner that we want to use it here? That you know of?
You know, that's a really good question. I believe so. I don't really know the answer. I believe so because Andy Lalonde, who is an attorney for BOSI's, brought this to our attention. He's also on our, our mediating committee for union contracts. And he brought this to our attention, that there are other, there are other municipalities who avail themselves of this. And that, so that's why this came, came, came up.
Just to be clear, though, Heather, this is the actual BOSI's maintenance mechanics doing this work, not the BOSI's automotive maintenance program doing the work, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, because I think that's where a lot of the concern's coming from.
I got a, I got a question. Mark Williamson?
Yeah.
All right, I, I got a, are, are we planning on phasing out the mechanics? Is that what's going to be happening?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Dave Short.
This is work, this is work that's being done by outside entities at this point. This, this work is being done, done by outside entities at, at a much higher rate. So we're always looking at opportunities. We, we are not allowed to supplant contractors, outside vendors for our CSC, or actually Teamsters laborers. We can't do that. We, they'd be grievance filed. So this is really just to supplement, not supplant.
Dave Short.
I have, I have another question. Is there any way we can go out to bid and give it to somebody, maybe that's approved within the city limits, that does truck repair? Is there any automotive facility that does it within the city? That maybe we could, obviously they're paying city taxes, they're spending their money in the city. I'm just, just, just throwing it out there. And do we, could we go out to bid for this?
Yeah, that's a really great question. I know that Kate Hartnett worked with Dave Short on this. I wasn't part of it. I just, when I saw the legislation come by, I wanted to make sure that we had a comparable figure. What we could do is we could set it aside tonight, so I can get an answer to that question and come back to you with a little more thorough memo as to the reasons why, what they'd be doing, and if there's an opportunity to bid it out within the city.
Can you hear me?
I think Dave Short's online. Dave Short's online.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello? Okay. Okay, basically, this is a backup to the eight mechanics that I have currently. I'm in various stages of retirement and new recruitment. Last winter, we had a bit of a problem getting our plows ready for the season. So what I did is I was out looking, soliciting other, other mechanics that could help me if needed. I've gone to other municipalities, I've gone to the county, I've gone to the state. They're all willing to help, but only after their trucks get done first and depending on what the status of what else is going on in their work environments. I, I went to Utica MAC, I went to Peterbilt up in Utica, General, United General, these are all heavy duty truck companies. Their, their labor rates are well over $100 an hour. And to put out a bid, and that would tie up money in my budget for something I may not use consistently. So when this BOSI thing came up, it was a perfect fit. I would only use them on an hourly basis to fix things or to get ready for the winter season with my snowplows at this point. They're not there to do everything. They're just there to get my plows ready. These are not students, this is not part of the program. These are actual certified heavy diesel mechanic, mechanics that work on BOSI's bus, buses for the kids, that bring the kids into school. They also do bus work for other central school districts. They've done some other work with municipalities too, not as much though. So it, at this point, it seems to be a win-win, especially for the labor rate that I would have to pay. Maria?
Yeah.
Can I say something? David, you did a wonderful, going rate. And if, if you got the highly qualified mechanics working on the trucks, you can't beat what you, your proposal is in front of us. I have no problem supporting it. You did a wonderful job, David. Thank you. And just to let everybody know, the, the Teamsters are aware of my plan. No one is being misplaced, no one's, everybody's still going to have overtime opportunities. So they're, they're working with me on this plan. DPW, about five years prior to me coming on, had 14 mechanics for three shifts. I am down to eight. And out of those eight, I have three of them that are senior mechanics that like to take their time. You know, their vacation time, their sick time, their personal time, that really eats into what can get done down at that garage. And I can't afford not to be ready for winter with these big trucks.
And I did just want to mention, Kate Hartnett did really do a very thorough job at getting through this agreement and making sure that it met the requirements for, for the city of Utica. So as it relates to legalities, I, I think, you know, she did a great job and, and we're there.
Right, so this is going to be 13 months and then we could maybe renew it, you know, in a year, obviously. Could renew it if their work is.
Year by year basis.
Bishop, okay.
Dave, this is Councilman Beatrice. I just want to clarify one thing. You say that these are BOSI's mechanics. Now, the BOSI's, and in the BOSI's program, there's also, you know, students learning to work. Will they be teaching the students as they're working, or they're just working on this on their own?
These are not teachers. These are actual mechanics that work on the BOSI. BOSI's almost is like its own school district.
Okay.
So they, they have their own equipment. These guys are the guys that work on it.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Any other questions? Do we want to move forward with this tonight?
Move forward with it.
Okay.
I agree.
Next is ordinance number 12. It's an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus city equipment and supplies. Does anyone have any issues with this?
I just want to know when to post it on eBay. I want to, I want to see if I can grab those tires, a good price on them, I hope.
It's a resolution renewing the intermunicipal agreement for police services by, in the city of Utica and the town of New Hartford. Think we're good with this one?
Has Chief Ryan say anything about that? Chief Williams, is he there?
Larry Joseph? The mayor already phoned somebody?
Is there somebody from the police department?
Chief Williams is on the line. I do know that this is, I think, the renewal of the services that we did, I think it was maybe four years ago.
2015.
Yeah, it was 2015. I remember this happening, yeah.
Yeah.
Zach, can you comment on this?
That's exactly what it is.
We have a joint slot team.
Right, yeah, and it's actually grown into more than that. It's now, that's why it's a full-blown intermunicipal agreement. It's worked out extraordinarily well. There's been no legal issues to report. We use this as the basis to get accreditation and get various grants. It's authorized by law. I, I answer any questions the council might have on it, but it's, it's not a big lift.
Okay, move forward.
Okay. Next one is ordinance number 14, renaming of southwest corner of Hobart Street to Grove Place, essential workers' way in city of Utica by Councilmember Lamedico and Miola.
I got questions on this one.
Okay. We got to hyphenate it.
I have a super, super simple question before Mark's question starts, because I'm assuming they might be a little more involved. Which street does this involve? Because it does not, it's not clear if this is Elm, Stuben, because it only describes the corner to the corner between Hobart and Grove, and it crosses multiple streets.
The question was to hyphenate the street, not to rename it, is that correct?
You don't have to, you don't have to mend all the maps and everything else.
Right.
If, if you just, if you designate something, a way that's on a street, it's an additional sign on the street area.
So I'll go.
And therefore, you don't have to add all the postal thing.
Right?
Right, absolutely. Goes down on the street sign.
I, I think the way it's, we're, you're changing the name of the street. You don't have to do that. You can, you hyphenate it so that it, there's no office to change anything, and the people who live there still have the same address. You know, it's just.
It's like the Wilson.
You know, it's just uh it's like it's like a memorial to them, you know, just like uh just like we did with the uh late football player.
Okay, all right, all right.
So Judge, Judge Garamone, just uh I just shared on the screen, um what I'm requesting is a clarification of if if Elm Street or Campbell Street is being uh dubbed as Essential Workers Way, because we're describing this corner to this corner, which could also mean.
It's just the corners, it's a corner sign, Michael. So there's gonna she's gonna put it on that corner sign post.
Ah, okay, okay.
See it right? Are you with me?
Yep.
Okay, all right, let's move on.
All right, you're just gonna put it on that corner sign post, that's all, all right?
Yep.
Sounds good. Uh the next one is resolution number fifteen. It's a resolution calling for a public hearing adopting the new zoning plan and map for the city of Utica. Do we have any question on this one or? How's everyone?
Um yes, uh I did get some complaints. Uh Maria, may I speak for a few minutes? I did get some complaints on the um uh some of the residents. Uh we were, they were, they weren't told that in changed on their property. Um I do think it's, you know, congenial of the least the council and our um, you know, Brian Thomas and whoever is involved, to at least send letters out to the residents who are um submitted under the new plan uh any zoning change of their property. Um there are properties that are for sale now and they're under commercial uh um uh commercial use and and our new um zoning law brought it down to uh neighborhood uh a neighborhood use, a neighborhood uh mixed use, which needs to apply if they want to run the same business, apply for variance. So that lessens the value of the property. So at least a minimum, please, if the council would support us sending out letters to the um property owners who are subject to a zoning change concerning the new plan.
Confirmed.
I hope my I hope my colleagues, I hope my colleagues will support that.
Agree, yep, agree a hundred percent.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna hold off.
Could we cut this in?
So let's back up a second. This is calling for the public hearing. This is just calling for the public hearing. Um.
Well, Mike, there's no sense calling the public hearing if the residents of the owner property owners have not notified that their zoning's changed.
Do you want to, do you want to amend this public hearing so that it includes?
Let's hold off until we know if Ryan Thomas sent it out, all right?
Okay.
I'd like to just put it in committee if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I'd like to weigh in this. I'd like to weigh in on this as well. You have the floor. Um so I I completely agree with what Councilman Miola has just suggested. Uh also, now that this is actually with us, I and I talked with the judge about this, any and all changes to be made to it have to be made through amendment by us. And I just want to point out that we're gonna be making, um I'm gonna be suggesting, I shouldn't say we'll be making, I am gonna be suggesting dozens of amendments and 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 one set of them and maybe perhaps we can make this, we'll be able to make a whole bunch of amendments as one. Um are simple grammatical corrections. Um I find this document actually in some really simple formatting ways really sloppy. Um I mean, I'm not talking about the content and the substance of the law. I will have things to say about that down the road. But um as somebody who's taught college for thirty years, uh the inconsistent language you're gonna have to make dozens of small amendments before um I think we will make this into an actual law. I just want to put that out there now. Um and it, I'm getting feedback. And it would in fact, I think in my view, would be actually much more efficient if we um if this legislation got taken back upstairs and I'd be happy to go upstairs and uh show people all the proofreading mistakes that need to be corrected and then it could be sent back down. I doubt anybody's gonna want to go for that, uh but I'll just put it out there anyway. But we're gonna be having to go through this line by line and make an awful lot of amendments because there's an awful lot of just kind of sloppy writing here.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I'd just like to suggest that seeing that the uh the Corporation Council assistant is here, that uh we talked about, that I told the friend, you know, she can amend this any way she wants and grammatical things are are one thing. But if she, if if some of the things she proposing uh change the content and purpose, uh that is a different thing. And all I was suggesting, wanted to suggest to her is that she put her proposed amendments in writing and she submits those to me and the Corporation Council, uh Mr. Zorn. And uh that way, as you say, then when it comes time uh to make maybe a formal amendment on the floor to the actual document, the Corporation Council and the council attorney uh are all informed beforehand. So if we're asked a question, we're not caught not being able to answer because we haven't been forewarned. So two things uh are being requested here. Anyone who's zoning uh things from like commercial to some other use, uh they should be aware of this thing before uh before it's even passage. And I I agree that maybe the public hearing should be after they've been informed uh that their zoning being changed. That's number one. And that we have sufficient time for councilperson friend or any other councilman to have written proposed amendments that can be incorporated into this document and adopted by the body and has passed or has at least been seen by the Corporation Council and of course, council attorney is supposed to see all the amendments and legislation anyway. So uh I encourage councilperson to put her amendments in in a in a forum so that when she reads them off, uh we'll know exactly what they are and will have them distributed beforehand.
Yeah.
And uh and I, well, she said there's a lot of grammatical things in there. Well, that that is, that is obviously grammatical doesn't, it all depends what the grammatical error is, but the but that's that's, this is a and uh I I think it's 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 it begs for a real close examination. So uh that's all I'm suggesting is how she proceeds procedurally.
Obviously, I will do that. I actually imagine that some of these things are gonna be best handled in a spreadsheet. Uh so that, you know, or some sort of a kind of complicated document where I list out um all the little mistakes that we need to clean up before we pass this into law. I again, I would like to suggest that it might be much more efficient if we take this back out of committee, rescind the legislation, send it back upstairs. I would be happy to go upstairs and spend, you know, some hours uh with uh Mr. Thomas's Commissioner Thomas's staff and get all these um these small writing errors cleaned up. That's gonna actually be a much more efficient means by which the council can address these, can address all, and I'm not talking about the substance. I'm talking about the um I'm talking about the inconsistent language, uh and grammatical mistakes. So but that's.
There's there's other council members who may also have grammatical and text changes that don't change the con- the content of what the zoning is. Um so I would suggest you do that and submit the pure grammatical changes to the council so that we can all review them.
Okay.
I have a question for the judge, Maria.
Absolutely.
Okay, Judge, if we as a council were to change area that's zoned, commercial, whatever it may be, and we change the the zoning ordinance to a different one, whether it be uh residential, non-commercial, we make a change. And I know it's all color coded. I saw the map. We make the change. And does it have to be approved by the zoning? Once we bring it, does it have to go back to the zoning board? Board and they have to approve of the change that we make or when we make the change, is that final? You know, you know what I'm trying to say? It's it may be it may be zone is a a commercial use, but we want to change it to residential. Just just for uh, you know, uh we we feel that a lot of our constituents want to want to make a change. Yeah, you don't understand what I'm trying to say. I'm pretty clear about this.
I get it. It's a great question.
Judge? You understand it?
Judge, are you on?
He's with Frank, so is Frank there?
What, am I me?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is.
Go ahead, go ahead, Judge.
Did I already talk?
Yes, you didn't. I'm sorry.
Did I explain what I said?
No.
Well, there the zoning ordinance, when you adopt a zoning ordinance or or change zoning ordinance, our our procedures have to be followed, they'll have to follow them here and public public hearings are one of them. And the changes uh uh that you make will have to be referred back to the planning board, as I understand, who will have to have a public hearing and then uh see what happens uh at the public hearing or the planning board. This this procedure is gonna take a while and so we're we're just gonna have to follow it. I I don't uh know whether we're uh we're ready to amend this document now and then uh present it uh as a document uh for passage uh we have that public hearing first, I believe. So uh I so we so between now and uh I don't know if you have enough time between now and September uh second uh to have all your amendments ready, uh whether everybody's been notified and can be ready to comment on the public hearing before you adopt it and uh and then refer to planning again, I believe.
I would think there might be a lot of amendments that come from the public hearing because the council's gonna hear the people, correct?
That's right. So so I think before you're gonna do anything uh that the people can't uh is hear all the amendments, you know, and the amendments be something that are published to the public first is is also so the the document we see now may not be the document that you're thinking of adopting. And uh so it it's sort of a the usual aspect to it, I think that uh before you can have the public comment on something, they should know also what the amendments are too. And also, there should be the people who are affected by this map that the has been sent out uh should know and be aware that they being they're being asked to comment about that too. So this is a big document. I don't think it's been years since they've done this. I think cautiously. I don't think there's any rush to the public hearing. Everybody's uh ready to uh to be, have a document that amendments to and possibly adopt after a public hearing or put it back in committee after, depending what the people say at the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I think we should do. And one other thing, Judge.
It's 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 a big, it's a big project. It's, you know, it's a long document. I it took a long time to read it.
Right. Is is that grant the hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar grant?
I think if he's still here, if Mr. Zorn has any comment on anything I've said regarding that ma- that matter.
Uh no, would that make
I concur.
Hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars, is there, is that time sensitive where we have to have it in by a certain date in order to get that grant?
So that that already happened. That's how they put it together.
That I don't know anything about. That I don't know anything about. That's something that the among the councilmen, I I don't know anything about that part of it. If that's if that's so, that also has to be decided tonight. Are you, are you ready for your amendments tonight, Mr. Councilman Friend? Do you have proposed amendments tonight?
No.
Do you have amendments tonight?
No.
Send it to committee and move on.
Yeah, that's the general.
I I that's all I have to comment. I don't know anything about any grant or any anything that's uh uh gonna that has to itself tailing with the adoption of this matter.
All right, so we're gonna move forward and not not bring this out this evening and not call for the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
We'll be moving on to resolution number sixteen. This is a resolution providing for a public hearing on the discontinuance of the portion of Burston Road arterial highway in the scale of the scene. Um I I believe the corporate council wants to speak on this. Zach, are you on?
I I'm not lying. I'm good at all. I I I this wasn't submitted by me. I think Katie did this. I'm not sure what this was for.
She did. She she just said if anybody had any questions or if anybody, so does anybody have any questions regarding this?
It's it's in Bobby Burmaster's district. If uh if he's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
We're only calling for the public hearing if you guys do this tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Move it forward.
And the other piece goes into committee.
But I but if we if uh should we call the public hearing if if none of us know what the rule is this about?
Well, it's a it's it's uh this has to do with the reconstruction of the arterial uh over by Faxon Hospital. Uh if you look at the map, I know it's not exactly describable, but basically there's a piece of Burston Road that has been drastically modified. You know, part of on-ramps and off-ramps and different intersections. And there's just a piece that needs to be added to quote right-of-way and the the portion needs to be discontinued. Um so that that that's what it's pertaining to.
And I did talk to on this. She did want it to move forward. Um it is exactly what she said, President Galemy. It is just a right-of-way. So calling for the public hearing would not hurt us in any way this evening.
Let's move for the public hearing. Put the other one in committee. That's all.
Um the next is uh ordinance number seventeen. It's an ordinance providing for the discontinuance of, oh, never mind. There I go. Uh the next one is ordinance number eighteen, ordinance granting eight-foot fence for UMHA properties on one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine, one thousand one hundred and thirty-one, one thousand one hundred and thirty-three half. This is for Councilmember Moody. Are you okay with this?
Absolutely.
The next one is ordinance number nineteen. It's an ordinance establishing deployment benefit, curate liability, reserve fund, general municipal law. Does anyone have any questions regarding this and does law want to speak upon this? Law Department?
That I can speak on after there's any questions, but simply what uh what this does is when in culture separates from service from the city. We include certain economic and what this point allows us to do is essentially pay those academic liabilities out of this fund.
I don't know, Heather Short.
I don't know if she's still on the line, but she can explain what you're saying. I legally, that's what.
I don't know. I'm on the line with the question.
No, I'm okay with it.
Okay, we can move forward. What was that?
There's no questions. We can move forward.
Okay, the next is resolution number twenty submitted by Councilmember Williamson. It's a resolution requesting the preservation of FY twenty twenty-one funding for the ARC United Lewis Chapter and recognizing the significance of all OPWBD twenty programs. Is everyone good with this one?
Yeah, why not? Looks like a nice one.
And
Okay.
With that being said, uh we're going to adjourn the pre-caucus caucus meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, um Madam Chairperson, um Jack LaMedico is having a few technical difficulties. So let's call, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven thirty-five because I need to call him on the phone and uh see if we can get his internet back up so he can dial into the main meeting, okay? Okay. It is 7:37, August 12th, 2020, calling this meeting of the City Utica Common Council to order. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
McNeil, Burmaster, Friend, Miola, Moody, Beatrice, Williamson, Lamedico, DeBrango, and Galemy, all present.
Thank you very much. Please rise and place for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
A nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you, we'll have a moment of silence for the deceased members of the council. Okay. This meeting is called to order. The first order of business this evening is a public hearing, we actually have no public hearings this evening, so the public hearing is now closed. Next, next order of business is the minutes. Clerk, have the minutes been dispersed?
Yes, the minutes were emailed to council on July 16th from previous meeting, and they're also available to the public at Eco Street, Dixie, in New York.
Okay, do we have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
I do.
Okay. I think it was DeBrango and McNeil. All right, quick roll call, because we are all online event today. McNeil, you're vote.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola. Miola.
Yeah.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
Yes.
Brango. Thank you, the reading of the minutes have been dispensed. Clerk, do we have any miscellaneous communications, cash reports, et cetera, this evening?
No, there's no miscellaneous communication tonight.
Okay, do we have anything specific from the mayor?
No, nothing from the mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to remonstrances and legislation, et cetera. First district, Majority Leader, Councilperson McNeil, you have the floor.
Nothing this evening.
All right, thank you very much, and I just saw everyone keep track, I have the full list of everything we reviewed in pre-meeting conference on the left side of the screen, and I'll be scrolling through the legislation as you guys call it.
Is anybody getting echo other than me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm getting it, too.
All right, I'm going to mute all the cellphones in the meantime. Ah, I know where it is. Okay. And I think I muted the echo.
No, no, you didn't.
All right, some of it may be on the end, we've gone back completely online, full WebEx, we might have a little bit of echo, I'm chasing it down as I see people's microphones feeding back.
Oh, my God.
Mr. President, Jack Lamedico, it looks like he signed in twice.
Ah, that might be the problem. Oh, and now, ah, okay, so.
Can you knock me off one?
I'm going to try, yeah. I'm going to click.
You only need one, Jack.
Okay. All right, Jack, you there?
Uh, hang on, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I gotta get this other one here, okay, I got yous.
All right, perfect, all right, yeah, I think it was on your side, you were in there twice, Jack, probably from earlier, you probably reconnected, so we're good to go now. All right, so as I was saying, just as we move through the districts, I have all the legislation on the left, and we'll just keep track of, if anything does get left to the side, we'll bring it up once we reach Councilman DeBrango. So Second District, Councilman Burmaster, you have the floor.
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilperson Friend, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have little, I do just want to say that school is starting soon, lots of different schools, SUNY Poly is going back this Monday, a week from Monday, Monday, the 24th, I'll be teaching face-to-face, 70 students every Monday and Wednesday, not sending students all at one time through the course of the day, and I hope everyone can continue to do everything that we have been doing so well for the last several months, I hope that we can keep it up so that we do not see this return to school, we don't see some sort of a surge with COVID-19, that is my hope. So I want to encourage everybody out there to continue to wash your hands, wear your masks, stay the heck away from each other, so, and I'll be telling my students the same thing. And that's all I have this evening, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. President Protem, and fourth ward, Councilperson Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Mr. President, I'll pass this evening, thank you.
All right, did you have, are you, is Councilperson Moody introducing ordinance one? All right, Fifth District, Councilwoman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Miola, and I thank you, Mr. President. I do want to say just something briefly, in kind of response to Councilperson Friend, the technology piece in terms of COVID-19 is really troubling for me, and now that a lot of kids are going back to school, when we initially wrote that resolution in terms of rent relief, that the mayor was, supported that, and we got that done, but there's another piece that we also wrote, and that was the technology piece in terms of laptops and stuff like that for the kids, and I do think that there is still some way to support the city, the school district, support our kids, because there are still needs for a lot of young people in the area who don't have laptops, and the mayor announced last week that certain parts of downtown will have Wi-Fi, I think that is a tremendous step, and I know we have the chief and the deputy chief on from the police department, I think also, too, there might be some discussions, even with the school district and maybe the youth bureau, to figure out that if there are people, kids down there going to be using that downtown Wi-Fi access capabilities, how can we make sure that that's safe, how can we make sure that technology is not stolen, how can we make sure that our community is protected as well? So we're moving in the right direction, I want to just support our kids in terms of technology. That being said, Mr. President, I want to pull resolution, resolution one, can I read it in part, or really ordinance one, or should I read the entirety of it?
You may read it in part, just make sure that the be it ordained is specifically.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to read.
Thank you.
This is ordinance number one, whereas many residents of the city of Utica and the county of Oneida have complained of the constant nightly explosions of illegal fireworks at all hours of the evening, and whereas it is not uncommon to hear these, that are nations on or before the Fourth of July, but they are also an annoyance during other holiday period for the reason that they continue into the late hours of the evening, and because of the decibel levels interfere with the quiet enjoyment of one's evening hours, and be it ordained that the city, that the Utica City Code, Section 21558, is whereby amended by the addition of a new paragraph, eight fireworks and explosives. Eight fireworks and explosives are unlawful to possess and/or use in the city of Utica without the insurance of a permit. Fireworks and explosives are unlawful in the city of Utica if they are in violation of Section 270 and Sections 405 of the Penal Law of the State of New York, no person shall bring into the city of Utica or have in the possession illegal fireworks and explosives, and shall not ignite them at their home, workplace, or place of employment, and most specifically are forbidden in any park or playground except that event sponsored and approved by the city of Utica by the issuing of a permit there for. And this shall include any substance or compound or article having properties of such a character that alone or in combination or in continuity with other substances or compounds may decompose suddenly or generate sufficient gas, heat, or pressure, or any or all of them to produce rapid flame combustion, or administer a destructive blow to surrounding objects, fireworks, displays, conducted with a permit issued by the city of Utica, and the use of any fireworks or explosives without a permit are in violation of Section 21562 of the City Code, a violation of this section shall be prosecuted in the same manner as other violations of the city's codified ordinance.
Okay, is there a second for this piece?
That tongue twister.
Beatrice. I'm the second.
All right, we've got, I heard first, so Mule is the second on that. All right, so we'll have your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lamedico.
Yes.
And DeBrango. Thank you, Brango.
Yes.
All right, thank, all right. Clerk? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh, somebody typing. Uh, I think it was Celeste. Okay, um, Councilman Moody, is there another piece you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I wanna pull out, uh, Ordinance 18.
Ordinance 18. All right, let's get down there.
Ordinance granting eight-foot fence for U, UMHA properties on 1129, 1131, and 1133 Seymour Ave. Be it ordained that the Common Council for the City of Utica does hereby grant to the Utica Municipal Housing Authority of 1129, 1131, and 1133 Seymour Ave permission to erect an eight-foot fence along the northeast side facing Mortmore Street, along the back adjacent to Dudley Ave, and along the southwest side facing Eagle Street of said property.
Is there a second?
DeBrango.
DeBrango's the second. All right, your votes. McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yeah.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yep.
DeBrango.
Yes.
All right, 90's adopted. Thank you very much. Councilman Moody?
Uh, I'm good, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Beatrice.
Yes, I have no, yes, I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Um, Council Large, Majority Leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm thinking to pass, and then I'll get that resolution I'll pull out. But, um, I invite all the council members, uh, to stop by Culver Ave and say hello to the, the youth kids from the city, uh, doing a lot of cleanup on the, on the Culver side, pulling out more brush and extending the park out, another acre. Uh, to stop by, and if you do stop by, just bring a cup of coffee black for me.
What, what time you get there, Mark?
Uh, I usually get there at, at right about nine, and then I keep them there till about one, and then sometimes we take a break, and then we come back. Uh, we work weekends, too, because we're weather-dependent, so we'll be on a Saturday, and, um, and I leave it up to the kid, uh, the, the kids if they wanna come back on Sunday. My goal is to get them a hundred hours, uh, so they can, uh, make money to go back to school and everything else, so.
Uh, how many do you have working a day with you?
I have, uh, fourteen.
Fourteen? So a box of tomato piles will work out then, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, just stop by and say hello to them, and, and, uh, you know, thank you for what, you know, the great job you're doing. Sometimes a good slap on the back is a.
They do. They do a great job, and you've done a great job as well.
Well, it's all about, it's all about the kids, not me. But anyways, uh, can you get that resolution up online for the ARC there, Michael? Cause I can't, you got it?
The ARC Onida Lewis Chapter, yes, let me bring that down here. All right, perfect.
All right, let me make it a little larger here. All right, uh, Resolution requesting the preservation of FY 2021 funding for the ARC Onida Lewis Chapter and recognizing for significance of all OPW funded programs. Whereas for over sixty-five years, ARC Onida Lewis has carried the mission of enabling persons with disabilities and their families to achieve their potential through self-determined goals, and whereas the ARC provides leadership in our community to develop the necessary human resources to fulfill the mission, and whereas Residential Day has habilitation, respite, educational vocational, and employment services, support of over fourteen-hundred persons and their families and employees over. I can't read that now. Workers with the Onida, uh, Lewis Chapter boundaries, and whereas many of the ARC employees are direct supporter professionals deemed essential healthcare workers who provide the best possible care for the people who support all the time, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas it is recognized by the Common Council of the City of Utica that this organization provides indispensable service to the greater Utica area, incumbency Oneida, and Lewis counties, and whereas the Common Council of the City of Utica acknowledges New York State should maintain funding for all state-funded services, especially those under offices in the New York State Office for the People with development of disabilities and pre-COVID levels, and be it resolved that the Common Council City of Utica requests the funding which ARC depends on, which is necessary to the well-being of the persons the ARC serves, be preserved and deemed essential to the FY 2020 New York State budget, and be it further resolved that this legislation be forwarded to the Governor Andrew Cuomo, State Budget Director Robert Muchka, Senator, Senator Joseph Griffo, Senator James Seward, Assemblyman Marion Botenshaw, Assemblyperson Robert Smolin, Assemblyperson Brian Miller, and Assemblyperson John Salco, Assemblyperson Ken Lincoln Bush, and Director of OPWDD, Thomas Kastner.
Is there a second?
Beatrice.
Lomarico.
McNeil.
All right, there's lots of seconds. Uh, the clerk will reflect one of them. Thank you. Uh, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Yep.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yes.
And DeBrango.
Yes.
Thank you.
90's adopted.
Thank you very much for that. All right, uh, Williamson.
I have, uh, President Cleveland.
That's all yours, eh? Okay. All right, so Council Large and E&amp;A Board Member, Jack Lomarico, you have the floor.
Do I have anything from E&amp;A to bring out?
Uh, we've got ordinance three, four, five, six, and seven, if you would like to.
All right, I'd like to bring ordinance three, four, five, six, and seven out.
All right, so we'll do the first one. Um, do we have a second to ordinance? Hang on, I gotta get it up on the screen here.
DeBrango.
All right, ordinance three, a second from DeBrango. All right, this is a transfer of funds for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Uh, Councilman Lomarico, do you want me to just summarize them, or would you like to read each one?
No, you could go ahead.
All right.
I'm saving my voice.
All right, thank you. Explanation for transfers unexpected repairs to stormwater pipes, creeks, ravines, and catch basins affected by the October 31st, 2019 storm for a total of one hundred fifty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson. Williamson. Art Williamson.
Yes.
Ah, there we are, Lomarico.
Yes.
Brango.
Yes.
Thank you.
90's adopted.
Thank you. Councilman Lomarico, would you like to move ordinance number four?
Number four, yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a transfer of funds, 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Uh, it's from various medical accounts going to street lighting electric for a total of five hundred and fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, this explanation is the purchase of closing street lights delayed from fall of nineteen to the spring of 2020. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Wait, yes.
Thank you. Lomarico.
Yes.
Brango.
DeBrango, yes.
Thank you very much.
90's adopted.
Okay, Councilman Lomarico, would you like to move ordinance number five?
Yes.
Second, DeBrango.
Thank you. Transfer of funds, 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Explanation was to reclassify salaries to wages for job position that was now changed to 2020. It's a total of fifty-five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, going from engineering salaries to engineering wages within the same cost center. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico.
Yes.
And DeBrango. Brango.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
90's adopted.
Councilman Lomarico, would you like to move ordinance six?
I certainly would.
All right, a second?
McNeil.
McNeil is the second. All right, the transfer of funds, 2019, 2020 fiscal year. This is from Police Admin to Police Admin. It's going from holiday physician fees to salaries and unused sick pay. Explanation is to reclassify from 2021 to 2020 police retirement payout on 3/28/2020. Let's see here. Okay, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster. Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico. Lomarico. DeBrango.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did Lomarico, did he vote?
I thought I heard him say yes. Councilman Lomarico?
I, I think we lost.
I think we've lost.
Oh, hang on.
90's adopted, is he there?
Well, hang on, let me just make sure. Let me, uh.
He's got a caution sign up there.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm.
You're back, you're back. All right. All right, so your vote, your vote on that one that you, uh.
Yes.
Thank you very much. 90's adopted. All right. All right, um, ordinance number seven, would you like to move this, Councilman Lomarico?
Yes, make it quick, though, before I lose you.
Yeah, right? All right, it's, uh, from contingency to planning contractual for a total of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars to adjust for thirty thousand dollars incorrectly budgeted compared to prior years. Uh, is there a second?
Beatrice.
Okay, Beatrice is the second. Your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Burmaster.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes.
Miola.
Yes.
Moody. Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomarico. Oh, no. We lost him. All right, uh, uh, DeBrango.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think what I'm gonna do here, cause I have Jack's number, I'm gonna dial him in on his cellphone into the meeting, and then we can call it a day and continue. So just give me one second to do that.
Man, Michael, you gonna put him on speakerphone with you, and then he'll be great on that? Just put him on speakerphone? All right, I'll, I'll put Jack on speakerphone.
Um, Council, Councilman Miola, I'm actually gonna call him from the meeting so that his name is reflected when he's speaking. Uh, it'll just take two seconds. Whoever is typing again, uh, if you could please mute while you're typing, uh, it's causing all kinds of ruckus. All right.
Not me, I can't type that fast.
He should be with us in just a second.
Jack, hello?
Hey, Jack, all right, you're with us.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. Well, that's quite all right. Um, we'll figure it out. Uh, you've got the stuff on your computer, so we will, um, we'll just be reading, and, uh, everything will be displayed as it was prior, so I'm gonna share my screen now that I have you dialed in.
Well, how do I get you on my computer? I don't, you're not on my, I'm not on your computer. You there?
Yeah, I'm there, I'm just, uh, sharing the different pieces of legislation. One second.
So I can look at my phone and see the pieces?
Um, no, you won't. Uh, well, if you, um, if you go on your phone to the YouTube Live channel, yes, you can. Absolutely.
How do I get? How do I get there?
All right, so go on your phone to Google, uh, Google City of Utica, YouTube.
Okay, hang on a second.
Yep.
Let me type again.
Thanks, everyone, for bearing with us, um, rather than having Jack drop off. Um, it'll just take two, two more minutes to keep him on.
Okay.
All right.
Order investment, Utica development, the Utica YouTube, time of council, the, May 6th.
If you click the City of, if you go to, you, if you go click any of those links, it should go to the City of Utica YouTube channel, and then you could click the current meeting that's live. Actually, you know what? I could probably text you the link. Let me do that.
Geez, Jack, we, we have eight.
Yeah, but, you know, he's on. He made it this far.
August 12th, there I am.
Got it?
Yep, I can't see much on it, but I got it.
All right, but you could see it, right? It's in the live stream? Very good. Okay. All right, so, um.
I just needed a vote for this one transfer for number, um.
Ordinance number seven.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. 90's adopted, ordinance seven.
All right, so, uh, Councilman Lomarico, that did end all of the E&amp;A transfers?
All right, I do have, uh, two things I'd like to bring forward, and of course, I can't pronounce them at all, cause my computer, on my screen here, but I think it was number three was for hazardous workers. Hazardous pay for.
Number two, yes, number two.
For health workers?
Yes.
Okay, well, can, I would like, uh, when I bring it out, I'd like to see if I can get, get the full council on this. Did we get it already?
All right, no, let's do it right now. All right, so Councilman Lomarico is moving Resolution Number Two, Hazard Pay for Essential Workers Resolution.
Okay, second.
Second, DeBrango.
Okay, um, he, he's made a motion to add full council?
I'm good with that.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Beatrice.
All right, Beatrice is the second. Any opposed to full? Okay, full council. Um, Councilman Lomarico, uh, would you like to designate? I'm gonna read this for you.
Yes, please, and before I do that, just would like to say, I have another one coming up, uh, redeeming, uh, a portion of the street, uh, and that they, so two, two of these sort of go together, and I'd just like to comment. Uh, the first one is, uh, the, uh, the hazardous pay for, uh, healthcare workers. Now, in New York alone, uh, in our, I think, we've lost, and, and I think sometime in June, or I think it was May, that I was able to pull up, we've, we've lost over six hundred healthcare workers. And these healthcare workers go to work every single day, knowing that they're gonna be in contact with this COVID-19. It's just like soldiers and airmen and nades going to work, and Coast Guard and Marines going to work every day, knowing that they're gonna meet the enemy. That's what these people are doing on a daily basis. And, and the, 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 the real troubling part about it is that when this first started, you know, they were, they were reusing, reusing masks, they had any mask. They were putting garbage bags over, over their bodies to, to, to try to. you know, they were, they were reusing masks, they had any mask. They were putting garbage bags over, over their bodies to, to, to try to protect themselves. They're doing everything they could, but they went to work every day, and they didn't stay home, and, and they faced the challenges. And I think this is a tremendous, tremendous, uh, uh, plot of, 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 of how good these workers are. I, I just can't get, uh, get over it, you know, seeing every day, you know, uh, uh, on TV them going, and then reading how many have perished, that, their, their, their families, members have perished. It's, it's, it's just so sad, but yet, every day they get up. And I'd also like to mention too, when, we, we were at the, uh, I think it was the Loretto, is that what it's still called over there where the OCA building is? Is it still Loretto?
Oneida Center, but yeah, yeah.
What is it called?
I think they call it now the, the, um, Oneida Center.
The Oneida Center. Well, myself and Celeste and, um, and, uh, and, and Frank Miola were there, and we watched them do a walkout on this hazardous pay. And I gotta tell you, the majority of the people that walked out were people of color. And they were working every day, and they explained how that they wanted to go to work every day. And these are low-paying jobs, but they're willing to go to work every day because these are the type of jobs they're getting nowadays. But that said, they go to work every day, and they're doing a tremendous job, and I want to give them all the credit in the world. But one thing, I gotta, I gotta, you need to make note of, a lot of these workers, who are frontline workers, did not get the hazardous pay because of the position they had within the, within the, uh, nursing home. And I, and I think that is just terrible, that these people are still in the same environment, rece, getting COVID-19, but yet they're not getting the hazardous pay. And the part of this, the first resolution I wrote is asking the governor to take a look at this, and, and, and try to remedy this situation, because that never should be the case. Because like the rest, like the nurses and the healthcare workers and the aides, they go there every day and they know what they're, what they're facing. So I think this is really important, this, this first one. The second one is the renaming of the street. I don't know why we got Memorial in there, that's not what I put. I put renaming the street, a portion of the street in front of that building. I put it in front of that building for, for one reason. That's where the nursing home is. That used to be the for, the former, uh, UFA, for the tremendous citizens from the city graduated, so it's doing some things at once. It's also, there's many police officers that graduated from there, many firefighters that graduated from there, many of our greatest citizens all graduated from there. And, uh, our first-line responders should have a street, because we're in a war right now, and we need to dedicate something to them for the tremendous work everybody's doing these days in stopping this. They go every day, they know that something's gonna happen to them possibly, but yet they, they go on. They had a police officer being shot at a couple of weeks ago. He went to, but he still goes to work every day. We have nurses going to work every day, walking into a hospital full of COVID, a nursing home full of COVID, still going to work every day. This little memento of naming the street, the first of that street, I think, is for everyone involved, and it's, it's such a thing that says, it is for everybody in the city who went down that street, that little change there, and they can appreciate what they, what these people have done. That's all that matters.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Uh, and thank you, uh, to the council members just bearing with us when we had to fix the technical difficulties, because I'm glad Jack was on to say all that. Um, all right, um, would, which council person would you like to summarize this, uh, legislation for you before we, uh, we vote on it?
Well, who do I got on it again, the first one?
Uh, well, it's full counsel on Hazard Pay for Essential Workers Resolution. Any one of us could summarize.
If anybody who was up to speak up with me, welcome.
I'd be, I'd be happy to read it quickly for you.
All right, go for it.
Uh, Hazard Pay for Essential Workers Resolution, support, subject, support for hazard pay for all essential workers during coronavirus pandemic in the city of Utica, whereas in early 2020, the coronavirus pandemic arrived in New York State, healthcare workers, grocery store workers, letter carriers, and brokerage delivery men and women, first responders and law enforcement, teachers and transportation workers, who were deemed as essential to keep our state safe and running, whereas essential workers risked their lives and by proxy the lives of their families. In order to keep our communities functioning, some essential workers contracted COVID-19, some gave COVID-19 to their family members, and some essential workers succumbed to the COVID-19 disease and passed away. Whereas some, but not all essential workers were given a one-time hazard bonus for a hero's pay incentive. But all essential workers have not been properly compensated for risking their lives to continue working to keep our community safe over the past five months of the coronavirus pandemic, whereas all essential workers should be recognized and compensated for their continuing dedication to keep our community safe, healthy, and operational, all while putting their lives and the lives of their families at an increased risk of contracting COVID-19. Now therefore, clear resolve that the City of Utica Common Council, one, supports hazard pay for essential workers as part of the Heroes Act, the Heels Act, or any coronavirus pandemic relief legislation. Two, supports Governor Cuomo's call for hazard pay from the federal government for essential workers. Three, directs the city clerk to send certified copies of this resolution to United States Senator Charles Schumer, United States Senator Kirsten Gillibrand, United States Congressman Anthony Burdissey, Governor Andrew Cuomo, New York State Senator Joseph Griffo, New York State Assemblywoman Mary Ann Burtam, to all other local and regional groups participating in hazard pay for our essential workers.
Okay, your votes, McNeil.
Yes.
Bermanster. Bermanster. I believe you're muted. I've been muting people who've been just having noise on their line. Bermanster. Bermanster. All right, I heard the yes. Friend.
Yes.
Thank you. Miola.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Beatrice.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Lomado.
Yes.
And Debrango.
Yes.
Nineties adopted.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Jack Lomado, would you like to now pull, let me find it for you, uh, ordinance 14, the Hobart Street legislation?
Yes, and if I could get a full counsel on this, I'd love to as well.
Okay, so let's just, uh, if you could move it with full counsel, we won't need the second motion there. Can you move it with full counsel?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President?
Yes, Judge, I hear you.
I would like to offer, I would like to offer an amendment to Councilman Moody for a reason that when we do this as a rule, we don't change the street name, because all these people on those streets have checks with their street name on them, all their mail has been coming for years over. We, we designate a place honorarium, so I would...
Should we change renaming to memorializing?
Yeah, it's, I'm saying that the, the title should be designating, uh, the southwest corner of Hobart, uh, Street to Grove Place, Essential Workers Way to City. I would get rid of the further ordained clause, because we're not gonna change their addresses. I mean, they'll still get all their mail like they always did, and, and, uh, and their checks, they don't have to change their checks and all that. But I'd put further ordained at the, uh, sign shop of the City of Utica, to design and place the appropriate signs on the, uh, uh, sign along Hobart and Grove Place, uh, that are designated herein as, as the Essential Workers Way. Way, uh, the sign shop will just put the signs on top of the street where that appears in that period, if you're down at that area. And that way, uh, if you live on Grove Place, you don't have to start changing everything else and the post office.
Judge Garrow, I have a question, uh, to make it easy, because there's a lot of places where it's mentioned. Is it possible the council could just make a motion to strike and replace renaming with designating and memorializing? That way throughout the piece, it's, uh, not renaming it.
That's okay, that's okay too.
Excuse me.
Designating and memorializing is just, uh, is a fact.
I don't agree with this. I think it's just a thank you for coming sign you put that up there. I think we should name that, that portion of the street that.
Oh, all right.
Because what these people have done, I don't agree with that.
No, I'm with you, Jack. I was just, I was just, just trying to clarify Judge's thing. All right.
There's a streethouse down that street, it's not a big deal, and they're still gonna know where that's gonna go. This is what these people have done over this past year, or the eight months, is beyond naming a stupid street on top of the street sign for what they have done. I feel it's wrong that this, this portion of the street should be named correctly.
Well, then if you have the council's support on that, um, Jack, then that's, then that can happen. Yeah.
Well, I'm asking for the council's support.
My, mine's just a suggestion. I don't know anything about the people who live on Hobart and Grove Place, and, and how they feel about that. If council person doesn't want to do it, then, okay with me, I'm not the council person.
All right. All right, well, it doesn't...
We're keeping it as is?
I would like to leave it, I want that street changed, that portion of the street changed, the way we said it, because these, first, these, these workers out there deserve something like that. From now on, when they drive down that portion of the street, they could see that we really appreciate what they have done.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's, hey, thank you for coming.
Do we have a second? This is very, no.
Hold, hold on, wait, hold on, wait. I also want to make the point that I, that, um, um, and I can qualify this, but I'm not signing, I'm not signing on as the... Hold on, wait, I asked for the floor. I'm, I'm making a point that I'm not signing on on this other co-sponsor.
All right, hold on, um, Councilman Miola, I apologize, I'm gonna, if you, you and the judge are having a second call, I'm gonna mute the microphone. Uh, Councilman Moody, you had the floor. Can you specify that again?
I was just saying, I, I, I'm not signing on as a co-sponsor of this, uh, particular, uh, uh, legislation.
Okay, so it's, it's, um, not full counsel. Is, does anyone else object to being on this legislation?
Uh, Jack, we have to do a hyphenation on this one. It's almost, it's almost impossible for us to change the street without changing a lot of other private, a lot of things like DMV, registration, street laws, uh, police, maps, driver's license. So sir, um, can we put, at this time, Jack, can we settle for just hyphenate the street, and then we can look into, uh, changing the street name after that? Is that okay?
What do you mean hyphenate, Fram? That quite changed me.
Well, on the court of, uh, Hobart and, uh, South, you know, both Grove Place, right underneath it, it would, the sign will say Essential Workers Way, right underneath that, right on that corner sign.
Say again?
Uh, right on the corner sign of Hobart and Grove Place, Essential Workers Way will be underneath that sign.
They don't cross.
So, let, let's just...
Wait. Hey, hang on a second, I, I saw...
Hold on, Councilman Miola has the floor. Everyone, everyone else, I'm just gonna mute everyone else if you're speaking. Uh, Councilman Miola has the floor, so he can explain to Jack Lomado, uh, what he is explaining. Um, so, so Councilman Miola, you have the floor.
Yeah, Jack, Jack, or, or, let's, let's, at this time, if, if, if you don't mind, uh, let's hyphenate it at this time, then I'll, uh, go over exactly all the nits and, uh, things and procedures that need to be done to change the street name. It, it does become quite cumbersome in a lot of records. Go ahead.
First of all, you ought to...
I guess he's gone again.
You agreed that you would want to do this. Why you want to change all of a sudden is beyond me. But...
Well, I thought we were just hyphenating it. I didn't think we were changing the street.
You're telling to someone else, I understand, but I don't agree with you.
Mr. President, may I have the floor for a second? I have a question.
Yes, I'd like to hear your...
Okay, my, my question is, when we talked about this, did not we use the comparison that we were doing it as the late football player? Didn't we say that's what we were doing?
Thank you, Joe.
And under, under the late football player, isn't it the street called the same, but there's a sign that it's named Will Smith Way, right? I thought that's exactly what we were doing.
No, they, no, the, the street did change on Will Smith Way. Uh, Councilman Lomado, um, I'm not debating what you are saying, but procedurally, in this case, um, Councilman Miola does bring up a good point. If you actually change the name of that street tonight, you'll invalidate people's, uh, car registrations, their licenses, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so, just procedurally, I just want you to, to consider that, um, although I completely understand and hear the explanation of why you want to change it.
Mr. President? Don't I still have to?
On the Will Smith Way.
Um, all right, so Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor again?
Yes, but again, in caucus, didn't we, didn't we say that we were putting the sign underneath and the street name wasn't changing? Or did I miss that?
Uh, you, we did. Uh, you guys did discuss that, I should say. I, I was just along for the ride, but yeah.
Unfortunately, I was the listener.
Okay, so I, I'm, and I'm sorry, Jack, I, I'm, I'm just going by what we said in caucus and what we agreed to.
My, my computer had died on me, I wasn't part of it.
No, that's definitely what was said in caucus.
I, I wasn't there, I wasn't there in caucus, I'm there.
All right, so...
If you, if you was wanting to start with that, I, I don't like it, but, uh, if, if we're doing this for somebody, I understand. We're kowtowing to somebody because he's crying, I'll go ahead with it, and we'll do it the way you'd want to do it.
Specifically, who?
Hold on one second, I still have the floor.
I don't think anyone was kowtowing.
Hang, hang on, I, I'm not, I'm not saying anything. All I'm asking you is, we agreed to in caucus, that's all I'm saying.
All right, I, unfortunately, I wasn't in the caucus because my, my computer counted out on me. So if that's what you guys decided, uh, I'll go with it.
All right, so the piece, who was the second on this piece, clerk?
I, we didn't get a second.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second for Miola. Um, and, um...
As amended, correct?
Well, please make the motion to amend.
Right.
Yes, uh, uh, I second it to amend. Um, of course, uh, it's designated, uh, memorialized, uh, and it, and further be, uh, let the last further be ordained be striked, and to be replaced with further ordained at the sign shop of the City of Utica. Uh, and please put the appropriate sign, um, underneath the corner sign of Hobart and Grove Place.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, Beatrice is the second on the amendments. Clerk, did you record the amendment?
Yes, I do have it.
Okay, thank you. Let's, I need votes on the amendment. McNeil?
Yes.
Bermanster? Bermanster, please unmute your microphone.
Yes.
Thank you. Friend?
Yes.
Miola?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lomado?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, Debrango?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
Do they intersect? I, I don't, I don't believe they intersect. Hobart intersects with Elm.
Yeah, so Councilman Debrango, you bring up a good point, that's why I brought the map up earlier. Um, this, um, if, if they want to place a sign at a...
That'd be Hobart and Elm.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly. Hobart and Elm. Uh, I think the initial intention, uh, by Jack Lomado as written was to rename and designate that section of the street.
Out of Elm Street?
Exactly, exactly, but it's, be that as it may, it still didn't designate whether it was Elm or, or Stuben, et cetera. Um, so, I'm not sure what the council wants to do with this at this point. Um, I apologize, Councilman Lomado, that, that procedurally, this is getting more complicated. Um, I would suggest that, uh, we, we place this in committee so that we could, we could correct it and get it so that it's, it's the way Councilman Lomado wanted it to be, and it reflects appropriately what, uh, needs to be designated.
Vote yes.
I'm just waiting for another motion, um, as the chair here, to figure out what you guys want to do with this.
Uh, we could put the sign, sign on the corner of Hobart and Elm Street, is that what you recommend, Frankie Debrango? Which to a corner?
Uh, yeah, that, that, that would make sense. They intersect. Yeah, Grove does not intersect with Hobart. So we're Southwest Corner.
I'll make a motion to, uh, let's, let's make a motion to move it to, to Hobart and Elm, please.
All right, so, the motion is to change the name of this resolution to designating the southwest corner... the Southwest Corner at Hobart and Elm to Essential Workers Way in the city of Utica? Is that reflected?
I, I now have a question.
All right. You have the floor.
I'm sorry. How can a corner be a way? It has to be a separate street. A corner isn't a way.
You're, you're.
Putting up one street sign doesn't make Emerson Ave is Emerson Ave from Emerson, from Genesee up to Holland. And there are street corners on, street signs on both ends and that makes it Emerson Ave. One name at one corner doesn't make any sense.
Okay. So that's where would you like to put it? Put it in committee then?
It's gonna have to be in two places.
Motion to put it in committee then.
All right. There's a motion to place this in committee which supersedes all previous motions on this legislation. Is there a second to place this in committee?
Second.
All right. Is anyone opposed to placing this in committee?
Let's get it right. Let's get it right.
It's in committee. Um, before we move on, because we've spent so much time on the naming, I want to reflect back to what Councilman Lometico said about this piece and the prior piece we passed about the hazard pay for essential workers. Um, I don't want the esoteric conversation we had about where these street signs are supposed to take away from what Councilman Lometico said about the essential workers that persevere through the COVID-19 pandemic. Okay? Thank you, Councilman Lometico.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, did you have any other pieces you'd like to move, Councilman Lometico?
I think that's it.
All right. Um, Councilman Debrango, you now have the floor, uh, council large. And there's a whole slew of things you could introduce.
I see that.
Also, reminders.
Yeah. First, first, first thought is the engineering department. I think they're doing a great job as far as trying to, you know, mitigate this flooding and trying to contain this flooding. Uh, they've been, uh, and it worked ever since, uh, last, uh, last year in October when we had the major flood. So it's gonna take some time. I, I, I credit Mahoney and his department there. Uh, I think they're doing an adequate job. Obviously, it comes with money and funding and, and we're gonna do everything we can to try to help them out so we could, uh, try to get, uh, some of this flooding under control. Obviously, some of it, you know, it's just an act of God and it just comes down so fast. It's, it's really hard to keep up with. That's one thing. As far as the essential workers, 100% with them. They put their legs on the line. I think Jack said it perfectly. Uh, as far as renaming that section, love to do it, want to do it, let's do it right before we, uh, you know, before we act on it. Uh, as far as that goes, resolution number nine, uh, I believe we are gonna hold off until next meeting and, uh, then we'll, we'll set up a public hearing. Uh, moving on, resolution number 10, the New York State DOT shared services agreement.
So Frankie?
Yes.
Number nine in committee, you have to say, ask for that. Would you please ask the president?
Well, it's already in committee. We're not gonna take it out.
Uh, well, it has not been introduced. It was reviewed at pre-municipal. So if you'd like to move the piece, just with a motion, would you like to move resolution number nine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, be, uh, do we have a second to that?
Mula second or to refer to committee?
Yes. All right. So Mula seconded that and made a motion to refer to committee. Is there a second to placing? Okay. Debrango's the second on resolution going to committee. Your votes are, no, here's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna call any opposed on placing that in committee. Going once, twice. Okay. It's in committee. Thank you. All right. So resolution 10, I believe, if you wanted to move on to.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't want to.
Okay. There's a.
I'm gonna defer to the clerk or the president to read all these.
All right. Thank you. I will summarize. Okay. Is there a second to resolution number 10?
McNeil.
All right. So McNeil is the second. By the way, uh, due to increased noise, I am muting people's microphones. So if you need to, uh, speak, please unmute. Um, all right. So resolution 10, resolution approving a shared services agreement with the Department of Transportation, whereas the city and the state of New York Department of Transportation wish to share services and exchange or land, or lend materials or equipment to promote and assist the maintenance of state and municipal roads and highways. And whereas the provision of such shared services would be an efficient use of local government resources and provide cost savings to both the city and the NYSDOT. Be it resolved, the common council of the city of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed shared services agreement and substantially in the same form as attached hereto. Further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to execute this agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
Debrango?
Yes.
Nineteen adopted.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next up, resolution number 11, the BOSI's agreement.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion for resolution number 11. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So, uh, Mula had the second on that, by the way. He was the first one to catch it. Resolution approving intermunicipal agreement with BOSI's for automotive repair services, whereas the city requires automotive and truck repair and maintenance services for the city's automotive and truck fleets. And whereas Madison Oneida Board of Cooperative Educational Services, BOSI's, has the appropriate equipment, trained personnel, and expertise to provide these services in a professional, timely, and cost-effective manner. Be it resolved, the common council of the city of Utica hereby authorizes and approves acceptance of the proposed agreement for automotive repair services in substantially in the same form as attached hereto. Further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to execute this agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. Here's the attachments with the names, terms, and costs of the agreement. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
And Debrango?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Clerk?
Nineteen adopted.
Excellent. Debrango, you have the floor.
I'm gonna move to, uh, ordinance number 12, UPD equipment sale.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
McNeil.
Okay. McNeil is the second. Ordinants authorizing the sale of surplus equipment and supplies ordained pursuant to section 7 dot 007 of the Utica City Charter, the mayor or his authorized representative is hereby authorized to sell city-owned property described below. Such property shall be offered for sale after public advertisement to the highest responsible bidder. Further ordained, if in the opinion of the mayor or his authorized representative, the condition of the property is such that offering for sale at public auction would be futile, then the mayor and his authorized representative is authorized to dispose of the equipment in whatever manner he or she deems advisable in the best interest of the city. Moving on, Utica Police Department Equipment, various vehicles, signs, equipment, computer equipment, and displays. Further ordained, the funds collected from the sale of said items shall be deposited into an account bearing an identification number of A409 dot 266501, and the funds shall be payable to the City of Utica Controller's Office, 1 Kennedy Plaza, Utica, Yard 1 through 502. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Mark Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
Debrango?
Yes.
Clerk?
Nineteen adopted.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Debrango?
Yeah. Moving, uh, resolution number 13, intermunicipal agreement for police services out of Mar.
Do we have a second?
McNeil.
Burmaster.
Okay. We're gonna go with Burmaster. It's been a while. Resolution renewing the intermunicipal agreement for police services by and between the city of Utica and the town of New Hartford, whereas the city of Utica and the town of New Hartford have negotiated an intermunicipal agreement as allowed by New York State law to permit each of their respective police departments to voluntarily enter into and render police services on and as needed basis in the other's geographic jurisdiction. Whereas the city of Utica and the town of New Hartford have a joint SWAT team which engages in SWAT activities in both jurisdictions, be it resolved that the intermunicipal agreement by and between the city of Utica and the town of New Hartford is substantially the same form as attached hereto, is hereby renewed. Further resolved, the mayor and the police chief are authorized to execute in the intermunicipal agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate this resolution. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
And Debrango?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Um, Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
And Debrango?
Yes.
Clerk?
Nineteen adopted.
Excellent. Debrango, you have the floor.
I'm gonna move to, uh, ordinance number 12, UPD equipment sale.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
McNeil.
Okay. McNeil is the second. Ordinants authorizing the sale of surplus equipment and supplies ordained pursuant to section 7 dot 007 of the Utica City Charter, the mayor or his authorized representative is hereby authorized to sell city-owned property described below. Such property shall be offered for sale after public advertisement to the highest responsible bidder. Further ordained, if in the opinion of the mayor or his authorized representative, the condition of the property is such that offering for sale at public auction would be futile, then the mayor and his authorized representative is authorized to dispose of the equipment in whatever manner he or she deems advisable in the best interest of the city. Moving on, Utica Police Department Equipment, various vehicles, signs, equipment, computer equipment, and displays. Further ordained, the funds collected from the sale of said items shall be deposited into an account bearing an identification number of A409 dot 266501, and the funds shall be payable to the City of Utica Controller's Office, 1 Kennedy Plaza, Utica, Yard 1 through 502. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yep.
Uh, Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yes.
Debrango?
Yay.
All right. It's in committee.
Yeah.
All right. Resolution number 16, would you like to move it?
Yes. Public hearing for discontinuance of Burststone Road.
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mula.
All right. Lometico. Oh, oh, there's lots of them. Uh, clerk, pick one. All right. Resolution providing for public hearing on the discontinuance of a portion of Burststone Road arterial highway and the sale of the same. Resolved that pursuant to section 101 of the Second Class Cities Law, section 29 of General Cities Law, and section 9 dot 005 of the Charter of the City of Utica, this council will consider adoption of an ordinance discontinuing a portion of Burststone Road arterial highway in the city of Utica. Further resolved that to further such purpose, the common council shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at its regular meeting on September 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers, City Hall, Utica, New York. Further resolved, that said change is submitted to the planning board for report thereon. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Burmaster?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Yay.
And Debrango?
Yes.
Thanks very much. I believe ordinance. Thank you. Thank you. I think ordinance 19 is the only piece remaining.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Councilman Mula, would you like to move ordinance, uh?
17 into committee.
Yes. Thank you.
To committee. Yes, Mr. President.
All right. Is there a second?
Burmaster.
Much? Any opposed to placing ordinance 17, the ordinance providing for the discontinuance of a portion of Burststone Road into committee? Okay. It's in committee until the public hearing. Thank you very much. Councilman Debrango, you have the floor again. I believe ordinance 19.
Ordinance 19, liability reserve fund.
Okay. Let's scroll down here to 19. Is there a second to this?
Burmaster.
Thank you. An ordinance establishing an employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund, general municipal law, six H P, ordained pursuant to section six, general municipal law, as amended, there is hereby established a reserve fund to be known as Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve Fund. Hereafter, a reserve fund. The purpose of this reserve fund is to pay for any accrued employee benefit due an employee on termination of the employee's service. The source of the funds for this reserve fund shall be such amounts as may be provided therefore by budgetary appropriations, B, amounts from any other fund authorized by general municipal law by resolution subject to permissive referendum, and C, such other funds as may be legally appropriated. In summary, except as otherwise provided by six P of general municipal law, expenditures from this reserve fund shall be made only for the purpose for which the reserve fund is established. No expenditures shall be made from this reserve fund for any employee benefit for which a reserve fund has already been established under any other provision of law. This ordinance shall take effect immediately. Your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Councilman?
Burmaster?
President? Mr. President?
Hold on. Someone, someone's asking for, uh, the floor. I believe that's the budget director.
Yes. I, I just noticed there's a slight mistake in this. We don't say the dollar number in the controller's memo. There was a dollar number and in here there isn't. And in the controller's memo, he was recommending $500,000. And so, um, I don't know.
I'm looking at the, uh, well, it can be amended. Um, this is the 11th hour of the council meeting.
I would like, Mr. President, could I make a motion to amend this?
Second.
Okay. And where would you like to amend that? Just state it.
My amendment would be, um, under in A. In A, so the source of funds for this reserve fund shall be, um, amounts from other, uh, Ms. Ma, could you?
No, no, actually, actually, hang on. I found it for you. Uh, in the paragraph under A, B, and C, Councilperson Friend, it says the controller is hereby.
$500,000.
Deposit. Let's, if you'd like to add the amount right there.
Yes. That is where I'd like to add $500,000.
Okay. All right. So the controller is hereby directed to deposit $500,000 and secure the money of this reserve fund. Is there a second to that amendment?
Burmaster.
All right. Is there any opposed? I don't think there is since everyone seconded it. Um, would that amendment suffice, budget director?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. So as amended, your votes, McNeil?
Yes.
Vernon?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes.
Mula?
Yes.
Moody?
Yes.
Beatrice?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Lometico?
Well, uh, yes, yes, yes.
All right. Debrango?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Clerk?
Nineteen adopted.
All right. Just give, uh, give me one second as the chair to review this list to make sure we've gone through everything before a motion to adjourn is made. Okay. That, that, okay. Dealt with that. Renaming, hearing, discontinuance. Okay. We have no further.
I'd like to move to, I'd like to move to adjourn tonight, please, Mr. President.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Moody, you out.
Have a lovely evening.